All rise. Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. This Honorable Commission is now in session pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and God bless this county. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sheriff. The pledge will, pardon me, the invocation will be given this evening by Commissioner Tietzner.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we love you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you. And Lord, I pray that we just do the will of the people. And Lord, do the will of you most of all. And Lord, I pray that you'll please just watch over each of us as we decide these major important decisions for our county. We love you, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I should remain standing in front of the pledge, please.
I plead the pledge to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Madam Clerk, Colerow.
Each Commissioner record your presence.
We have twenty-four members present. That means that a majority tonight will be the thirteen and sixteen for two-thirds vote. Do I have a motion for approval of the regular agenda? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to add under budget the housing of the grant administrator from the finance to the mayor's office, please.
All right. I think that the attorney has some information for us on that.
It's my understanding that any appropriation shift has to come out of budget first. So this will have to be something that comes from budget and recommended to the commission as a whole.
So the way, I think that's the 2012 Act, he says. So if that's the case, it could be brought up next month or after budget meets, whenever that is, but not this month.
My fault. I thought we could sell the county courthouse if we had enough votes to do anything, so that's what.
Well, Mr. Hinton almost did. But I did not know that until just a few minutes ago when he informed me.
So go through budget first and then we can talk about it. Got it. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Tietzner.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask if we could send 2008, 2408 Act 13 to the Congress at the organization of the City of Hendersonville to improve and maintain within county right of way on Cudgeside Drive. We had a good presentation on that, but we found out new information that a lot of citizens didn't get to speak on. And the key property owners, who are the county folks, just didn't get represented, didn't know about it at all. And so I feel like it needs to be deferred back and just get to have their opportunity to speak.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, like sign, so that will be. Oh, Lord. Okay. Yeah, I know. All right. Let's just place that on the board. Madam Clerk.
They're voting to.
Remove it from the agenda.
Yes.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
Send it back to committee, right?
Yes, just send it back to committee as recommended by the chairperson. And that will go back to committee. All right.
Mr. Chairman, sir.
Yes, sir.
The budget.
All right.
On underneath the budget, the William and Martha Brown Memorial Park, TDEC grant for the Brown Trust local and grant project 5073 continuing project. This is a resolution appropriating the carryover funding from fiscal year 2324 for the Brown Park project. This was passed unanimously by this body on July 17th, 2023. So I'd just like to get that underneath budget so we can get that, get that rolling. That's my motion.
All right. Motion in a second, but I do want you to know that I also was informed by the county attorney a few minutes ago that there may be a problem with that. And I'll let him explain that if he will at this time.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Just a question. We've had two things. We tried to add the agenda. How many things do you talk to about the attorney? How'd you know we were even going to add that to the agenda?
How many things do I?
I'm just wondering how many conversations were had about specific. I didn't talk to anyone about adding that to the agenda.
I've not had any conversations except just a few minutes ago.
I just didn't talk to the attorney, so I just didn't know how he thought somebody would just be adding a couple items.
All right. Mr. Attorney, tell us your opinion on that.
Yeah, I saw these packets earlier today on everybody's desk, so I figured it would come up for addition to the agenda since it wasn't there. And this is actually on two, maybe three different committees at the moment. I've got it down as being in budget, gen ops as far as property securing, and legislative as to the county parks and rec. So the only point I wanted to make was that will need to be discharged from those committees, so it would take a two-thirds vote on that.
All right. So keep in mind that if we do take a vote on that, it would take sixteen votes to get it out of committee into the floor. All right. Commissioner Sho.
And I, truly, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a dog in either of these fights. These are, this is general, this is procedural. The, the Brown Park is not in budget. I, we tried to, I tried to add that to the last commission. I think I either added or I supported it to add it. It got shot down. I didn't add it back again. The will, you know, I did not think that the budget committee would want to deal with it. I did not add it back. I've had no discussions about the Brown Park with any of these commissioners, you know, about adding this. And the, so truly, I don't have a dog in the fight, but if, we've previously understood that if it's in committee, that it needs two-thirds vote. It's not in the committee right now. So I, I mean, it should be a majority vote. I, that's my opinion. I, I don't understand why it's, how that's the case if it's not in the, if it's not in the committee.
Right. As the chairperson of budget who says that it is not in committee, I'm going to accept that and say that it would need to be a majority vote. So we will put that on the, just one moment. Over here first, who? Is it in legislative?
Yes.
It is still in legislative.
Also general operations.
All right.
It also passed already through both of those committees once and this entire commission a year ago. So I don't know how it passed off and then it just all of a sudden backed up in committees, but we can check those records. It's been through that process and passed unanimously in the budget a year ago when you lost it. So I don't know how you had it back there. There was never a vote to defer it or refer it back to any of those.
I'm going to ask one question, then I'm going to make a ruling. And if you all want to overrule me, you can vote on it. But we're not going to sit here and argue this a long time tonight. It looks like we're going to be here a while anyway. But Commissioner Mansfield, it is in legislative in your opinion.
Yes, sir, it is.
Has it been there the entire time?
It's been there from my ancestry.
Was it, how was it discharged at one time from legislative?
It's not been discharged yet. We're still in the process of having. No, not yet.
All right.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman. Some final questions. So.
What part of this is in legislative? That's the question, because we're, we've got a motion and a second to add this to the agenda for a budgetary procedure. And if there's something else regarding this that's outside of a budgetary procedure, I think this is all just smoke and mirrors. And this is just somebody trying to delay something because they don't want it to go through. And somebody playing games. So what's the context of it in legislative?
Okay. That's, Mr. Mansfield, can you tell me how it got out of committee at one time? Or what, what answer to that?
Currently, it's been a process for over a year in general operations where Chairman Klein has been trying to get answers as far as the, the actual codicil and will and the funding there for establishing the park around the Brown House and fixing, fixing up that house that is separate from the trust, the technology trust. And that's where kind of we're left with right now monetarily. And that was our last objective in legislative, is finding out the delineation from that. Because the county commission in April of 2024, we did pass a resolution establishing that park as was requested by the director of schools. And then I know our budget chair, the finance director has said basically, in order for any POs to be cut, that that money would need to be dispersed to the county. So the county went to the steps of doing that. And I know Chairman Klein of General Ops has gone through the process of trying to meet with the county mayor over the past two months and send an email to the entire commission, but it's not been successful with that. They're trying to move things along so this didn't fall through the cracks. But I think there is, there's a dispute between right now, the legal aspect of the will and codicil based on the law director, what is, he's talked about. And that's where it's in legislative, and that's tied up with the money from a budgetary standpoint. And so that's kind of where we left it in legislative.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, one more.
Wait just, wait just a moment. I'm going to go in order of people who are in the queue. Commissioner Miller, is this to help the chair understand this issue?
I'm in the queue for something else.
Commissioner Bullitt.
I had a couple of questions on the Brown Park and the reason I don't think that we can discuss it tonight. I've been looking for the grant because I don't think that the 500 that we have in the will and the grant, and bear with me a minute. It does have to do with how it can come to this floor. I don't think that we can use the will to the grant. And if we can't, we need another 500,000. We didn't notice that on the agenda, and that's a big amount of money.
I just, all I want right now, I understand what you're saying. All I want right now are commissioners who are in the queue who can assist the chair in making a decision in regard to this. And next is Commissioner Sho.
So, Mr. Chairman, once again, this is a procedural thing. And, and I, and I genuinely don't know the answer. But the question is, if there is an item that has been discharged, that is, if there is a budgetary item that's been discharged in budget, one way or the other, can a, an adjacent and related, does any adjacent and related activity around that item in another, in another chain of custody through the committee process, does that prevent something bring up with a majority vote? That's the question. Because if, if that's the, and I genuinely don't know, but if that is the case, then if you want to kill something or prevent it from being brought to the floor, anyone can, can basically at any point in the committee process bring something up and delay it indefinitely. So I, and I genuinely don't know. Like, I genuinely don't know, but I think that is the question we need to answer.
All right. Commissioner Jones, and please stick to assisting me in, in clarifying this because I'm getting ready to make a decision on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason why it got to legislative from general operations was because, and I can also explain to Commissioner Pomeroy why it got approved back in, last year ago, July. Budgetarily, it got approved that way, but then the park plan actually came to general operations in December. That was the first time we actually saw the plan, and rightly so, because it is a general operations operation for us to look at county-owned property. When we were given the will and explained that the park would be owned by the county and that the money was given to the county to build the park and the house was to be cared for by the, the county, it was in the right place. But then we started asking questions to get the key to the house and the money to start the park project, and we were stonewalled and have been since last December. That's when we started asking the questions. The law director could probably testify to the fact that he sent multiple letters to the director of schools and to the mayor about releasing it.
I want to narrow this down.
That's why it's in legislative, because we were at our wits' end with how to get it back into the county's hands so we could proceed with the park. So the whole question of why this grant.
So has it, has it just stayed in legislative?
It has been in legislative, trying to get answers so we can start something in gen ops. That's why it's kind of between gen ops and it's fully in legislative. And we're trying to get the answers and get the key to be able to start this project.
All right. Commissioner Pomeroy.
I think I can help. This is, one, I hope that, I'll, I'll get that on side note. But this is what we do. And I think me and you see eye to eye on some of this stuff. We start tying committees together and stuff never ends. I don't know about what our insquabble is or what is going on there. Not saying they're not legitimate. What I do know is from the budgetary, this is a budget item I'm talking about, that I requested to go back on the budget committee agenda for tonight about funds that have already been approved by this body, that after the fact somehow, those are still holding on because of whatever we can't do. But we will lose grant money. That's a fact if we don't take care of this action. On money we already approved, clerk can look it up on July 17th, 2023. Made it through budget committee the month before and was approved here. So I, I agree with Commissioner, my commissioner across the way. If we start saying that, well, now, but when we used to run this thing and me and you worked together on some deals, once it goes through and gets out of budget, that's all I, I can't talk about who is squabbling with who over a key to a house. But this that I've added is not in committee. It's already been through a committee and it's already been passed. After that, they can continue to argue about the key forever. But we need to re-vote on this so we don't lose this grant money that we already agreed that we wanted. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Becker.
Yeah. It is. It's, it's.
Narrow this to helping me.
Correct. It is, it's definitely tied to it. I'll just, I would like to ask, what is the, what is the Roberts rule or whatever that the, that the law director says that it needs two-thirds? So I can look that up for future reference. I know it's in honor of rules, procedures.
Well, I think the law director indicated that, that it was his understanding it was in two committees still.
Yeah, I'm just, I want to know what that, what the, so I can look it up myself. What is the Roberts rule's number or whatever so that, that I can better inform myself.
I would prefer that you ease up here and talk if you would like to. That's unusual, but I'm not going to get off on it. This is my last night as chairperson.
No, I got it.
And I'm not going to be here until any two o'clock. Okay? So.
That, that rule has never been in place before, like, three months ago.
Ask him that question because I'm going to make a decision and then you all can throw it out if you want to or whatever.
My comment is the simple majority should, should take place here.
If you want to come up and ask him, that would be fine. Commissioner Klein, this has got to help me in making a decision on this.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You've been in most of these meetings and you know that the Brown Park is riddled with legal problems. Things were done not correctly. And I have been trying since before June to put a group together, you included, to try to resolve the legal ramifications of this. And I've been able to make no progress. And I don't believe that we're at a point where we can vote on anything because this goes way past the decision-making of this legislature. This is about legal wills and following them correctly or incorrectly. So I believe that will help you most. This is a law issue. There's nobody trying to stall a park. There's nobody trying to do anything. This grant is good until July of 2025. So we need to do it properly and legally. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add a little bit to what Commissioner Pomeroy was saying. While I don't disagree with some of the things he was saying, the whole crux of this being legislative is, like Commissioner Klein said, it's, it's a legality issue. The funds will be dispersed to the wrong group if we do this wrong. We've got to work this out in committee, and that's why the legal part of our committees were involved in deciding how we go about getting it made right. That's why it's in legislative.
Thank you. Commissioner Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I want to repeat what my commissioner said here. I will make a note that when this came before the county commission in February of 2020 for the grant, I believe, there was no grant document and there was no documentation. There was nothing. It was just a one-page resolution and a one-page appropriation. Nobody's, I've never seen, I voted against this at the time. It was a pretty sensitive issue with this plan going forward because it's all about using eminent domain for greenways, especially connecting this campus to the bridal house. And that was going to require eminent domain and stealing people's private property along Station Camp Creek Road. And this, this document right here outlines that, the necessity for it. And so I was opposed at the time. The, the Parks Board, for example, was never officially created by resolution. There was a committee in September of 2020 that appointed seven people, which wasn't even statutorily correct if you did a board for this. And then just stuff started moving forward. I didn't vote for that at the time. I think that was myself and several others in here that are still in the commission didn't vote for that. Then it went through the process of even securing $100,000 for our, for doing this master parks plan, which I understand was part of that. But again, I didn't vote for any of these things at that time. I voted against all of them because at the time, specifically, it was super sensitive to eminent domain for greenways. And the problem I have with this right now is looking at the codicil and will of Mr. Brown. One, the Parks Board was never officially created, so there's no action taken. I know it was stated that we.
I want to order, Mr. Chairman, I, all due respect.
Wait, wait just a minute. Go ahead.
We've only been in session 20 minutes and we've accomplished nothing. And I don't know where these conversations is going and I don't feel, I don't know if it's helping you or hurting you.
I'm not sure either at this point.
Well, my point is, the, the will and codicil talk about the $500,000 goes to the county, not the schools. It's stuck in the schools right now. It needs to go to the county so we can start the parks project, and they're not willing to release it. And that's what Chairman Klein has had problems with. That's what we asked the law director to figure out last week is how to monetarily get that money that we're supposed to do to take care of this historic cultural property of the Brown House. It's from the 1700s because that is definitely our goal. And so that has been a problem and is there is a dispute over how that separation happens. It's great, grant money for that, it's fine. The problem is, in this, this plan, this $1 million plan, there's no money appropriated in this plan outlined for the actual renovation of that Brown House, which is what the codicil talks about, that the money goes towards. So there is a disparity between this plan and the, what the actual will and codicil say. And so what a lot of people's opinion is, and I believe it's the law director's opinion, is that there is not being done correctly. It, it's just illegal proceedings, I guess, for lack of better intent and purposes. But I can't vote for anything. I've never seen the grant. I voted for, against it in 2020. I voted against it tonight because I've never even seen the grant documents. So I'm just saying that's, it's a legal issue and I think it needs to go back to stay in the committee to get that worked out, bring it back next month. But hopefully we can get some answers on this to be able to get that money from the school board because we did pass that resolution in April of 2024 asking us to form, do this, and then we'd get the money. And that hasn't happened yet. So that's just, I see it as altogether, but that's my.
All right. We have a few people who are continuing to get in the queue. I, I understand the situation, and I don't think that you're going to be able to add any more knowledge than what I already have. So if you want to take your name out of the queue, I'd appreciate it. If you don't, I'll listen to you. County Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of misinformation spread about this project and, and how it's come about. The reality is, is that this is a joint project between the schools and the county. The county and the schools own the property which houses the house. The house is not on a separate parcel. So there is no separate parcel for the house that gives ownership to the county. It's, it's just not there. And so when we're talking about this project, this is a joint partnership between the schools and between the county. And that's the way this whole program's been laid out since the very beginning. We had the resolutions. We can go to the resolutions later when we talk about it. I don't want to belabor that point, but we got the resolutions that gives us the authority to appoint the Parks Board. Parks Board went through the committee on committees, went through the full body. All of that was voted on. This whole project has been voted on. This money was voted on for fiscal year 2324. All we need to do is roll this money over for FY '25. I mean, that's all we're asking to do. We can still argue about it, but if we don't get this project going, I've got a timeline here. If we don't start this project this month, we will lose that grant of $625,000. Now, the $500,000 is not sitting in any school budget. That's been said here. It's not in a school budget. That $500,000 is set in the trust that has, we have as trustees, have a fiduciary responsibility to release those funds when that project goes out to bid, and we actually have a project to bid on. And right now, unfortunately, we can't seem to come together and work with the schools to get this project going, and we are running out of time. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rogers. All right, question has been called. Um, Madam Clerk, put that on the board.
You haven't made a decision.
About a second, do I have a second to this?
Second.
All right.
It's, it's your decision as to, you were still talking about the two-thirds versus majority vote. So they're going to need to know exactly.
Yeah.
What they're voting on and what it's going to be.
What you, what, what we're voting on is to stop discussion on knowledge of whether this should be a two-thirds or a, um, a majority vote, in my opinion. And I, the discussion was centered around, this, the discussion was centered around, uh, knowledge that would help me in making the decision so that you can overrule me or you can go with it. And I don't really need any more help in making this decision, okay? Uh, put that on the board, Madam Clerk.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
There will be no more discussion on this and I am ready to, uh, say that, um, and my thinking, I'm hearing the Budget Committee Chairman say that, uh, that is not in his committee. I'm hearing the Legislative Committee Chairman say that it's in his committee. The Budget Committee is, uh, financially obligated to make decisions. It's more administrative and, uh, legislative. I'm inclined to say that it will be a majority vote. And, um, if you want to overrule that, someone make a motion now to. All right, motion, is there a second? All right, motion and a second? Uh, Commissioner Becker? Oh, is that on this?
Yes.
I appreciate Mr. Mr. Weiner coming over and giving me that Roberts Rules. I'm looking at Roberts Rules right now and, and it, it clearly states to me that, um, a majority, a vote of a majority of the entire membership can pull it out of, out of committee. So I appreciate, uh, you clearing that up for us. So it's, it absolutely a majority, so thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I believe that's one of our rules that we added a few months back to change it to two-thirds to pull it out of committee. We've been operating by, for the last several months. That being said, are we going to change course now and change the way we pull things out of committee? Because I've got a lot more to say on, uh, influencing other people now that you've made that decision on how to vote.
Well, the, the chair is not, uh, interested in, uh, criticism of a decision at this time. You see me after the meeting, I'll listen to whatever you have to say. Uh, Commissioner Mansfield?
I guess dispute, according to Roberts Rules, it is a two-thirds majority discharge from committee when it's being considered. The only time it's a majority vote is if it's been announced prior to the meeting, uh, essentially, and it was not announced, uh, uh, as you can tell, um, by, uh, comments by my co-commissioner. So, um, but Roberts Rules is clear that it is a two-thirds majority vote, uh, of the, a body, uh, to discharge from committee when something is being considered and going through a committee process, which this is. Just want to clarify that.
Commissioner Palmero?
I just thought that we were voting. I thought we were getting ready to vote. You said it would be a majority.
We are getting ready to vote. You're the last one, so let's go ahead and, and vote. Commissioner Jones?
If, if now we're, we're back on to the two-thirds majority because Roberts Rules affirms that if it's not been pre-announced before the meeting like this one, then we should be at two-thirds. What is the, what is the, uh, call to override the ruling of the chair? Is that majority or is that two-thirds?
You overrule me, it'll be two-thirds. But right now, I have ruled that it's a majority vote.
So it's a simple majority to override the chair also?
Yes. Go ahead and place that on the board, Madam Clerk.
Is this the challenge?
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, uh, the guest vote here is to overrule. Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, the guest vote needs to overrule and a held vote needs to confirm?
Yes. All right.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Uh, the decision of the chair stands with a two-thirds vote. All right. Um, we're back to the issue now at hand. And we will vote with a majority vote if the clerk will put that on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
And that passes. All right. So that will be added, uh, to the agenda. That was a vote to add it to the agenda. And that will be under, um, we'll put that under, uh, the chair is eight. All right, motion to approve the regular agenda. Second? All in favor?
I'm in queue to.
Go ahead and speak.
Uh, Commissioner Janong had, um, emailed the committee on committees, um, committee. And she had, uh, wants to resign her, um, position on education. And she recommends that we put Commissioner Bergdorf in her slot. So I'd like to change that on the, uh, under committee on committees on the, um, slate for, um, 2024, 2025.
So you want to remove her name from that committee?
Yeah, and, and put Commissioner Bergdorf in her place.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, wouldn't that be amending the actual thing that came out of committees? So I just need to be amended when we get to that?
I think what we ought to do is, uh, make, uh, be aware of the fact that Commissioner Bergdorf, uh, wants on that committee. She was the chairperson of that committee. I think she's a good choice, but that probably naming her as a person needs, does need to wait until we take up, uh, com- committee action and then we'll add it at that time. But remove the name of Mary, uh, Dr. Mary Janong from that committee at this time. All right, uh, we, Commissioner Harrison?
Yes, sir. Um, one additional change that I'd like to propose. Under the, uh, 2408-06, if it's within the will of the body, I'd like to move, uh, well, I guess it's technically under the report of the chair, but I'd like to move that notice and 24806 up and make it one and two. And then the election of commission chair and chair pro cam to number three if.
Well, I.
It'll be okay with the will of the body.
So you're saying move, uh, number three up to where number one is and handle it first?
Well, I, I think we have to have a notice technically first and then that and move.
Yes.
Yes.
Without, I, I was going to say without objection, we would do that at the time, but.
That's fine. If, if, that's, that's.
If no one has a problem with that, uh, we'll do it that way. All right, we have, uh, at this time, uh, do you have that on the board? Consent agenda, do I have motions for the consent? Regular agenda vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign?
No.
All right, carries consent agenda. Second? Second? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have the, uh, appointment of judicial magistrate Robert Fitzgerald removed from the consent agenda. Uh, also too, per our rules, uh, within, um, our, uh, just our body here, uh, there's a couple of things on the tax refunds that exceeds a threshold. So I'd just like to remove the Clayton Home Properties Tax Refund and the Mid-South Rentals, uh, refund as well, sir. Put on the regular agenda.
A second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Okay. Now, we will ask that, uh, budget take up those, uh, last two you mentioned. And the first one with the judicial magistrate, uh, I think would, uh, maybe legislative, we'll just take it up there under legislative. Um, when those chairman make their report. All right, back to the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Approval of minutes for July 29th? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Well, finally, we'll get to hear from the public. Okay. Uh, Tammy Weatherford?
Everyone, for the prayers, calls and texts, um, if you participated in helping to bring Sonny home or if you even were a citizen that lined the streets and waved your flags, um, it did not go unnoticed and we thank you all from the bottoms of our heart. In August of 2010, Sonny was appointed the interim sheriff after the untimely death of Sheriff Bob Barker. November 2010 was the first of four times the citizens of Sumner County overwhelmingly voted Sonny as their sheriff. From the beginning to the end, Sonny gave everything he had to this county and to this, to the sheriff's office. I'm sorry. He surrounded himself with people that were smart, educated, of good moral character and excellent work ethics. So it was no surprise when he named Eric Craddock as his chief deputy. Eric is all of these things and so much more. He, Sonny knew that in his absence, Eric could take over and continue with, with, with his vision. Although we had no idea that Eric would have to step up and fill his shoes so soon, Sonny knew that on day one, Eric can do it. The day that Sonny passed, Eric had just arrived home from Sevier County. He got the call and he got in his car and he came back immediately. While still taking care of everything at home, he took charge of getting everyone together, including, to get Sonny home, including myself and our children. Eric has the respect of his employees as well as the love and respect of myself and my family. I don't understand why any other consideration to replace Sonny could be considered. I encourage everyone to not only, this commission, to nominate Sheriff, uh, Eric as the interim sheriff, but for everyone to also vote for Eric come November. Eric, you have the full support of the Weatherford family. Thank you.
Thank you. Geneva Weatherford?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Geneva Weatherford. I'm the daughter-in-law of the late Sheriff Weatherford. We've heard many stories over the last weeks and time and time again, we've heard that Sonny was always a calm, reassuring presence in any room. He made people feel safe and cared for. He had the heart of a true leader. He led not to be seen or received praise, but rather simply because it was the right thing to do. I can attest and our family attest that in the three weeks and three days since Sonny's passing, Eric Craddock has demonstrated those same qualities. He has a true servant's heart and is a natural leader. From being with our family at the hospital to helping organize the logistics of bringing Sonny home, being with our family to assist with funeral plans and logistics, and even ensuring that Sumner County Sheriff's Office was covered so the deputies, corrections officers and staff could say goodbye to their sheriff. Eric has been that solid, calming presence. He has offered security, reassurance and continuity to our family, to the Sumner County Sheriff's Office and to the citizens of Sumner County, all while also grieving the loss of his mentor and friend. The citizens of Sumner County elected Sonny and then re-elected Sonny over the past 14 years to lead because they trusted him. And Sonny likewise appointed Eric to chief deputy because he trusted him. We are asking you now, not only because it was Sonny's wish, but also simply because Eric is the best man to fulfill the role to appoint Eric Craddock as interim sheriff of Sumner County. With his very solid leadership and vision, he and the men and women of the Sumner County Sheriff's Office will build upon Sonny's legacy and take us safely into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Dustin Weatherford?
Oh, I'm Dustin Weatherford. I am the youngest son of recently passed Sheriff Roy Weatherford III. The matter at hand is close to my heart as the office of sheriff was meaningful to my family. Our family has made a career centered around the position of sheriff and its office. That being said, my current job gives me a unique perspective as I had the pleasure of working with all 95 sheriffs across the great state of Tennessee. In my tenure, I have seen sheriffs retire and even others pass during their term of office. I have seen their respective county commissions come together, just like you will tonight, uh, to appoint an interim sheriff. The reason I believe my input to be invaluable on this matter is that I was able to witness the outcome of those decisions. In the rare cases where an outsider was appointed sheriff, the department saw instability as it was someone who knew nothing of the inner workings of the department and therefore slight chaos ensued. In some cases, the department shattered to the point of full-scale walkouts. I posed the question, what did this mean for the safety and security of the citizens of the county? In other cases, the commission chose not to appoint anyone and allow the department to run as is with the position of chief at, at the helm. I'm not sure on the details or logistics on how those worked in the counties or how it's allowed, but they did and chose to leave it to the citizens of the county to choose the next sheriff. In the cases where someone within the current administration was appointed, we saw seamless transitions. The department settled down as they knew what they were walking into the next day. This ability would leave the citizens with no need to worry for as to who would protect them or who will intervene on their behalf, given the need. To move matters closer to heart, I know my father. I know his plans and his wishes. He would not have put someone in as chief unless he believed them capable of running the office with the same steady hand, the same integrity, the same honor and privilege. There is no place further away than his passing. And I know his wishes would still hold for Eric Craddock to run for the office in his stead. In closing, I call for this commission to appoint Eric Craddock for the sheriff of Sumner County and then leave it in the people's hands and no. Sumner County, and then leave it in the people's hands in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Goodwin.
My name is Terry Goodwin, and I live in Hendersonville, and I am here tonight in support of Deputy Chief Eric Craddock. I've had the honor of knowing Eric for well over 20 years. I first met Eric when I was with the Booster Club for the Hendersonville High School JROTC program. Eric immediately stood out to me compared to a lot of the other students. After spending some months in the program, I saw what exceptional leadership qualities that Eric displayed. He was a natural-born leader. All of the other students respected and looked up to Eric. I've never seen such a young person with such leadership qualities at such a young age. I was fortunate enough to get to spend the next several years observing Eric in many different positions, and he excelled in each position and was highly respected by all of the students and teachers in the program. After graduation, Eric went to the United States Navy. My husband, myself, and my son drove to the Great Lakes to watch Eric graduate from Navy boot camp. Again, at the graduation, Eric stood out way above the other cadets with his leadership skills. The instructors realized what unique qualities that Eric had exhibited during boot camp. I have followed Eric throughout his career with the Sumner County Sheriff's Office, progressing to the rank of deputy chief. I have a lot of ties with the law enforcement community in Sumner and Davidson Counties, and I have never seen such respect and support for one individual than Eric that has been displayed in the support of Eric. That is something that is not heard of throughout a lot of departments. I have not come across any negative comments regarding Eric. His men love him and support him, which is huge in the law enforcement community. Not only does Eric support the men and women of Sumner County Sheriff's Office, he supports law enforcement across the county and state. Nobody can take the place of the late, great Sheriff Sonny Weatherford, but Deputy Craddock is as close as you will come. My hope is that this county commission will put any personal agendas aside and do what is best for the sheriff's office in all of Sumner County. I think that you have all seen the support that Eric has had, and to put anyone else in the position would be a huge disservice to the citizens. I humbly ask that you appoint Deputy Eric Craddock as interim sheriff. Thank you.
All right, we are beginning to move into some other issues now, and I will remind everyone that the rules of the commission are that you not, this is not a time for you to bash people by calling them by name. It's not a time to do that. You can speak for, but don't use it as a bully pulpit. I'm not sure of this name. Is it Cone or Con? The fifth, sixth, fifth person to sign up? Okay.
My name's Kenny Byrd. I live at 10 Vandywood Court in Hendersonville. First thing I wanted to talk about was Eric. I grew up with Eric's family my whole life, played baseball with his father, graduated high school with his aunt, went to high school with his uncle, know his mother, grandmother, know his grandfather. They're salt of the earth, as people as you will ever meet in your entire life. And Eric is a good man, for sure. That, I definitely, there shouldn't even be a thing about this. Sonny wanted Eric, and Eric is qualified, overqualified, to do this job, and at some point, we have to, as our county, have people in positions that have the resumes to take care of us all. And I don't think anybody can argue with that. We can't just continue the division and putting people in places that they don't belong. We have to, we have to figure out how to unite our county and do what's best for our citizens, but for our kids and our future grandkids, for God's sakes. You know, Mr. Hyde, thank you so much for your service to this county. There's a name on your school, our school, you know, on New Shackle Island that's got your name on it. Thank you for all you've done, but the person that's going to replace you needs to be somebody that knows how to unite, not divide. We have to have unification in this building right here. Every time I'm up here, all it is, is a big fight. It's a big fight, and I just can't understand, are we worried about our personal feelings, or are we worried about our community? It's just, at some point, there's got to be resumes. There's got to be resumes. There has to be. There has to be people that know what's good for our county, for our roads, for our safety, for our schools, for God's sakes, for all of it. We're the ones. I don't understand how we flip this around. We are the people. The government works for us, we don't work for y'all. And I don't know how we've got this reversed somehow, but somehow or another, this has got to change. And I understand, they say, oh, wait till '26, and wait till this, and wait till that. Well, the damage that continues to be done to our county is sad. My children live here, my mother lives here, my whole family lives here, all of my friends and all their families live here. At some point, there has to be some unification. Thank you, Mr. Becker, for being a good man. Thank you.
Thank you. Kara Kimbrough. Kara Kimbrough. Ms. Kimbrough.
She was going to speak on the right-of-way for Countryside.
Okay. Charles Kimbrough. Same thing, okay. Dr. Scott Langford.
I know the past wouldn't let you speak if they signed up in number four, should we offer that to the gentleman?
After him.
Scott Langford, 1260 12 Stones Crossing, Villisville, Tennessee, 37072. First off, I just want to encourage everyone to vote for Eric Craddock to be sheriff. You know, I had the privilege to work with Sonny over the last 10 years, and all I can say is, is that I've learned more about how to lead in a county from Sonny than anybody I've ever worked with. You know, he had such a steady hand, a quiet disposition, but also knew how to advocate and push, and very quietly make Sumner County Sheriff's Office the best in the state, best SROs in the nation. He was innovative, he brought money back every year, he squeezed every penny, never wasted a nickel, and loved everybody he came into contact with. And I just want to say, over the last couple of years, getting to watch Eric grow and learn, I think it's expressed on, it was expressed on Saturday at Gallatin High School, I think we've seen it expressed tonight, that it's clear, you know, on one hand, Eric is the most qualified to do the job and will lead us, he won't be Sonny, but he will take Sonny's heart, and Sonny's passion, and Sonny's compassion, and lead us in a way for the future of Sumner County. And I don't think, I don't think there's anyone that could do it better in Sumner County, and I'm excited to see the next journey for Sumner County Sheriff's Office. And we also need to lift him up in our prayers, because it's an incredible responsibility to take on the weight of the sheriff's office and protecting the citizens of Sumner County. But I don't know that there's a finer man that I've met to do that job, so I hope that everyone will work for, will work to do that tonight. I also want to thank Mr. Hyde, has finished his eighth year as chairman of the county commission. On Saturday Night Live, they give you a jacket if you host five times. Mr. Hyde, I don't know if you get a jacket, or, you can no longer offer me the gavel when I come. I'm not taking it. I believe firmly in term limits now. But I'm thankful, you know, if you think about Mr. Hyde's service, retired educator, principal, and superintendent, eight-year chairman of the county commission, 30-plus years as a commissioner. And that leads me into the last thing. First, we owe Mr. Hyde our thanks, because he has been a rock throughout the history of our county. And Mr. Hyde and I have not always agreed on every issue. We have disagreed, sometimes vehemently, but always politely and with decorum, and I appreciate his leadership. And that leads me to the last point. You know, you can say two things, there's an email that went out today. I do think that Mr. Mansfield did a great job leading the June meeting. It's not easy to be chair, it's not easy to jump in there. The one thing you'll always do is make your, make your friends angrier than your adversaries, and it's a tough job to lead it. So, I do think Mr. Mansfield did a good job in June, and I texted him and shared with him that I thought he did a good job, and it's not easy being chair. That does not mean that I endorse him to be the next chair of the county commission, because I think that over the last 10 years, Mr. Becker and I had the opportunity to serve on the commission for eight years. We started off together as rookies on budget and in financial management. He was vice chair a number of times while I was chair, and when I was out, he did a tremendous job leading the commission. And I will say this about Mr. Becker, he helped me numerous times from right there to understand Robert's rules, because sometimes when you're sitting up here and everybody's talking and everybody's jockeying, it's hard to make a good decision, because you're trying to listen to everybody and make sure everybody gets an opportunity to speak. I always appreciated having Mr. Becker to point out what was correct. We don't always disagree. I'm a little freer on call to question than Mr. Becker is, but he's been very consistent his entire time on the commission. And he's always researched his votes, he's asked questions, he's been willing to vote no, when he, when he thought that best represented his constituents, and to vote yes. But the number one thing I'll say about him is I think that he would use parliamentary procedure and Robert's rules of order to bring unity and not division, and I can't think of a better person to be the next chair of Sumner County Commission than Mr. Becker. So, thank you.
Now, if the Kimbroughs are here and want to speak, since that was pulled off the agenda, you may do that, would either want to speak. They left, all right. Eddie Crips.
Good evening, I'm Eddie Crips. You know, I lived at 1136 Windwood Drive in Castan Springs. Take a look around at one another here. Look at your neighbor, look across the room, look who's sitting before us. We are all stakeholders in something that we all feel is extremely important. That's the Sumner County Sheriff's Office. I am humbled to stand before you tonight, as a member of the Sumner County Sheriff's Office for more than 26 years, and realize that there's something so great that people are so passionate about. If you're an employee of the Sumner County Sheriff's Office, raise your hand. Ladies and gentlemen, these folks in this crowd tonight, they lace up their boots, they put on a uniform, they slide on a badge, in the vision of what Sheriff Sonny Weatherford laid before us. The other vision is sitting right over here to our side, that's Eric Craddock. We've heard about him a lot in the past week. Eric has taken on the responsibility of chief deputy of Sumner County Sheriff's Office. In the passing of Sheriff Weatherford, our stability became just a little bit soft. We were all concerned, we didn't know what the next step would be, and people acted. One of the things I asked that I could do was put out a petition. Petition here on change.org I put out, has 559 signatures over a period of eight days in support of Eric Craddock. This petition, for all practical purposes, encompasses many things that the sheriff, the responsibility of sheriff does. Family, education, sacrifice, commitment, and public service. Eric embodies all of those. Eric embodies the vision of the Sumner County Sheriff's Office. Eric embodies the vision of Sonny Weatherford. Eric embodies the vision of Sumner County's law enforcement future. When you all make decisions tonight, you're going to make decisions on a couple of things. One of the things is dear to my heart, and that's the sheriff. When you decide tonight, when you press the button, you press yes, you're going to press yes for Eric Craddock to be your interim sheriff. And then in November, we're going to go to the polls, and we're going to vote. We're going to vote for Eric Craddock to be our next sheriff, and lead this county to the next step of law enforcement capability and progress. Thank you.
Phil Olay. I think that's right. Pardon? Kevin Baker.
Kevin Baker, 424 AB Wade Road. I don't have anything as exciting to recommend Eric, although I do recommend Eric. You've been a good leader through the years that I've seen you operate, and I appreciate that. But that's not why I want to talk here. I'm sure Eric's going to do a great job. I'm here to talk about the $50,000 that we're going to rent a camper for the EMS. Now, that may sound trivial, but for $50,000, we could buy a camper, use it for a few months, and then sell it, or keep it as an asset. It just seems crazy to be spending 50 grand for a temporary residence. We could also apply that money towards the facility and maybe make a nicer facility, but, so, I just wanted to stand up and say there's options here, and I think the 50 grand is maybe something we should consider doing something else with. But anyhow, good luck, Eric.
If you want to say something positive, please stick to being positive and not negative. Jay?
He's worried about me being negative. Jay Ingram, I live at 755B Newton Lane in Gallatin. I endorse Eric Craddock, first of all, I'll get that out of the way, and hopefully Eric doesn't need endorsements or any help from me tonight. But what I wanted to talk about was, I think, an equally important issue is the appointment of a new county commission chairman. I think in any organization, leadership is important, and the person that's going to take that leadership role is going to have a lot of power as far as what things are voted on and brought to the floor before this commission, who's on what committees, who has leadership positions, and I think it's very important. It's something that the county commissioners are going to have to vote their conscience on. I think the choice is pretty clear, from who I've heard, is going to be the two people that are nominated. I think you're going to have one person that's going to be nominated for it, who, at least in all the meetings that I've attended and that I've seen, they've been a no vote for pretty much everything, and they're a member endorsed by a very divisive group in this county that I think has caused trouble with almost every issue they've touched. And Your Honor, I mean, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I'm used to it. Somebody objects, I've got to address the judge. I think that you've got somebody that represents a group that's lost every election that they've had here recently, and is obviously wanting to take the county in a direction that the people don't want it to go, and somebody that's after absolute power and control versus the other person that's going to be nominated, who I believe to be a thoughtful, considerate, reasonable person, who's open-minded and willing to exchange ideas and to work with other people. You know, somebody that I think was drafted to run, instead of, you know, actively campaigning among their fellow county commissioners for the position. I ask that you vote your conscience and do the right thing for Sumner County versus, you know, your own self-interest or the interest of any one political group or PAC in the county. And I think if you do the right thing for the citizens and vote your conscience, that that will be rewarded later on. Now, know this, that how you vote tonight, people are going to know it, and they're going to remember it, you know, in the elections that are going to come down the road. And I think making the right choice tonight is very critical for this county. Like I said before, leadership matters, and I would endorse Jerry Becker for county commission chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Charlena Allmiller. Sharlina Allmiller.
Hi, I'm Sharlina Allmiller, and I live at 143 Rule and Circle, Hendersonville, Tennessee, 37075. And I want to take a moment to say I agree with all the commenters about voting for Eric Craddock to be the interim sheriff. I did not know there was a petition, or I certainly would have signed it. I think he will do an excellent job as sheriff enforcing laws fairly and impartially, no matter what the political interest is of whomever is being subject to those laws. I thank him and his family for being willing to serve, and I hope you will vote for him to be interim sheriff. We have people who risk their lives keeping law and order in our county, and we just wasted 30 minutes of their time worrying about an agenda item, adding an agenda item. And I just want to say thank you for proving my point on what I emailed you about earlier Your vote will come up again and again, the vote that you make today. The decisions made by the chair you choose today will be reflective on you. If the commissioner from District 16 had been chair on August 12th, I have no doubt he would not have permitted the Budget Committee Chair's motion to amend the general county budget without requiring a two-thirds vote, and similar to tonight about amending the agenda. The commissioner from District 16 has been chair of the Committee on Committees and Legislative Committee for two years. Most Committee on Committees meetings are less than 10 minutes long because it has served only as a rubber stamp for whatever the committee chair had wanted. The agendas have no documentation of who applied for the committees, boards, and commissions. If you want someone to make the decisions for you, vote for the commission from District 16. But mark my words: If you vote for him to be chair, be prepared to be held accountable for every single decision he makes.
Narrow your comments, please.
I do believe that the rules say that there can be negative comments, and I don't even think that what I'm saying is negative. You will not be able to claim "It's not my fault" or "I didn't get to vote because of this procedural issue," such as that a two-thirds vote was required. There are enough people that see through such delegations of authority that we will all make sure that the voters know about it in 2026. Everything the next chair does will be assigned to you if you vote for that chair. You will not be able to run from it. If you vote for a chair that is only interested in serving the political interest group they lead, you will not be able to distance yourself from it. You will be tied to the political interest group regardless of what they rebrand themselves as in the future, and you will not be able to convince anyone otherwise. Your actions will speak far louder than your words will. If you really are not part of the political interest group that puts their interests above the public interest, then you will not vote for one of the main decision-makers of that political interest group to be chair. If you are not part of them, you would not vote for the District 16 Commissioner to be chair.
I tend to agree. Wait a second. I tend to agree, and you need to narrow your comments or make it very, very short.
Our commission rules clearly state we're to sit here and quietly observe, and as long as the person's speaking...
Well, we're not, no, no, we're not, we are not going to get in a debate on what is what with rules, period. All right, go ahead, shorten your comments, and, or sit down, one of the two. Just a moment. I'm clear. Nobody has to be clear but me.
If you don't agree with what they're saying, you don't want to hear it.
I don't want to hear it. Yeah, that's true. Absolutely, that's the way it's been. Okay, go ahead.
I just want to say that I'd like 30 seconds added to my time, but I don't think I'll need it. Your voice is in your vote. Your vote is for the next chairman, who will determine whether you get to keep your voice in future meetings, or if you will be silenced and your voice stolen to be represented to be only by only the chair, who has demonstrated he only wants to be intimidating others and invoking fear. I want you to keep your voice. I want you to keep your ability to vote on matters that the whole commission should vote upon and not give the authority to one man or to the committee to censor what the public sees in the agendas and prevent votes for the commission. I'm asking for your vote tonight for the commissioner from the 21st District for chair because he will serve as a chair as a chair is intended to be: just someone who keeps organization at the meetings, not someone who dictates what will occur at meetings and what the public will know. Additionally, for the Brown part, I do hope that you will approve the budget for it. The vote is very simple, and I only have a few seconds left, but the county and the schools bought the land. You can look at it on GIS. You can look up Ford 75 Upper Station Camp, and you'll see that those two are the owners since 2015. The land is not part of the will. The money is part of the will, but trustees do have a fiduciary duty in order to make sure that they, that, because the county doesn't get the money unless they're going to use it for a park, so they have to prove that they're going to use it for a park. And I hope that you guys do not waste any money on litigation costs for it. Thank you.
Ruth Fennel.
It stopped. The timer stopped.
What is your point of order?
We've been very good about being very lenient on rules with applause for good reason because of the sheriff's situation, and all of those were deserving of applause. No giving off. But we've moved into another territory here where the applause is lengthening the office meeting. Can we go back to our original position?
I'm in agreement that it is lengthening the meeting, but a lot of comments that are unnecessary are lengthening the meeting, too. So, let's all cooperate to get through this.
I do have comments. I'm saying applause after comments.
I understand. I understand. No.
I think she needs her extra 30 seconds. I'm sorry, I just think it's the right amount.
No. I'm saying no. Go ahead.
Looks like she's waving it, and I get three seconds back.
Go ahead and speak.
Okay, my name is Ruth Fennel of 1049 Blue J. Way in Gallatin, Tennessee. I'm here first and foremost, I don't know interim Sheriff Craddock, but it seems like he has a lot of support, so let's appoint him there and see what happens in November to make it official. I'm here to talk about the commission chair. First and foremost, I want to thank Merrill Hyde for his service, not only over the many years in the commission, but also in the past couple of years as far as the chair. I know that can be a challenge. I know Mr. Becker. He's a good man, and I think everybody on this commission is a good person. But tonight was opening, eye-opening for me in the fact that there are rules and procedures that need to be followed. If we're going to have a government, we have to have processes. And the question is really, are those processes followed? And we need someone, whether it's Mr. Hyde or anyone who's in that position, who knows Robert's Rules of Order and follows them. And that's not a personal thing. That is, here's what's in writing, here's what we have to do. That's why we also have a county law officer. We have an attorney who can interpret those and make sure that things are being followed. So, you know, it seems to me that tonight we saw an example of someone who was familiar with Robert's Rules of Order and some people who weren't. That should be a deciding factor. Now, some people will get personal and start attacking individuals because they don't personally like that individual, but that's not what we're here for. We're here for somebody who will follow the rule of law, who will follow the processes, who will do the right things. And if you like them, great. If you don't like them, it's what the rules say, okay? So, we really need somebody who's going to follow the rules of order. Now, some people don't like one of the candidates that is going to be, I believe, nominated, but that's a personal issue. This is not, should not be, a personal vote. And we've had, part of the reason that some people are angry is because the candidate that I would like to see in the position makes them accountable, tries to hold people accountable. We've got this park money that was put back on the agenda this evening, and if you actually look at the will of Mr. Brown, it says, "This bequest shall be a restricted fund held by the county in a separate account." Very clear-cut language, as far as I can see. I'm not an attorney, but it's pretty clear: "in a separate account and used solely for the purposes of the establishment, promotion, ongoing support, and maintenance of the William and Martha Brown Park." That was six years ago. That has not been done. Some people don't like to be held accountable for following that, but it needs to be done. What?
Point of order, I'm feeling lectured. Is that still a rule?
No, she's free to make her comments. Go ahead.
Only if it applies.
Go ahead.
So, the challenge is that we have people who have control of this, who are not responding to requests for information, requests for responding to emails, and that's inappropriate. We need people in leadership who will follow the process, who will follow this will. The Brown family was very gracious in letting Sumner County have this money, but they also requested that it be applied to their house and their house be maintained, and that house has been allowed to sit for six years and deteriorate and get broken windows, and that's unacceptable. So, some of the people involved in this process, on all sides of the world, need to sit down, pull your big-boy pants up, and get this done and do it the right way. And I believe that there's one person who will help to do that, but people don't like it because he tries to hold them accountable. So, I'm going to request that you vote for Jeremy Mansfield for your chair, which is I like Jerry, but I just want you to know that we've got people who talk about unity and then come up and slander individual commissioners, and I don't want to do that. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our, that concludes the comments for tonight, and we move to the report of the chair. I'm saddened to report to you tonight the death of former chairman of the county commission, Pat Webb, who served for many, many years on the county commission and education, and as chairperson of the county commission, who passed away a couple of nights ago. I think funeral arrangements have been posted and announced, and our condolences to the, to Pat Webb's family. We now move to election of the commission, to the election of the sheriff, and I will have the clerk at this time to read the notice.
Pursuant to Section 5-5-111 of the Tennessee Code annotated, notice is hereby given that on Monday, August 26, 2024, at approximately 7:00 PM, the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners shall assemble in the commission chambers of the Sumner County Administration Building, 355 North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, with respect to filling the vacancy in the office of Sumner County Sheriff created by the death of Roy "Sonny" Wilson Weatherford III, Sheriff of Sumner County, Tennessee. This special election will be held during the regular meeting of this body on the aforementioned date. Persons interested in this position are asked to submit a resume or qualifications to the office of the county clerk, Sumner County Administration Building, 355 North Belvedere Drive, Room 111, Gallatin, Tennessee, 37066, by Monday, August 26, 2024, noon local time, or attend the aforementioned 7:00 PM meeting and express interest to a member of the Sumner County legislative body. The position must be filled according to all applicable state statutes, rules, and regulations.
Thank you, clerk. At this time, we're going to do the election, and I will tell you that we have received two letters. One is from a Mr. Curtis Carney, the other Eric Craddock for sheriff. It's going to be a simple process. Mr. Craddock will be the green light. Mr. Carney will be the red light on your machine.
He's going to have to be nominated. Somebody's got to nominate him before he...
I nominate Eric Craddock. Second?
Okay. I think that's debatable, but, all right, Mr. Craddock has been nominated. Does anyone out of courtesy want to nominate Mr. Carney?
Move nomination space. Sir? Mr. Craddock will be activated at this point.
All right.
I nominate Curtis.
All right, Mr. Carney's been nominated. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So, those two names will be on the machine, green and red, Mr. Craddock, green, Mr. Carney, red, and I'll ask you at this time to vote.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
First of all, thank you. I'm incredibly humbled. I am. Greatest honor of my career. If you would have told the 14-year-old freshman at Hendersonville High School who wrestled in an 85-pound weight class that he'd be standing before you today, the sheriff of Sumner County, I'd have told you you were crazy. This was never in my plan, right? Someone said it best last week: If you want to hear God laugh, tell me your plans. It's his plan, it's not mine. Thank you for all your support. Thank you for the unanimous vote. That really means a lot to me. I'd like to take a moment and just think of a few people: my wife, my kids. This is a tough job, takes a lot of time and sacrifice. I couldn't do it without you. Mom, Dad, all those whippings paid off. Tammy, Dustin, Michael, you guys said a lot of really nice things about me tonight. None of them, it was my honor, and I hope, I'll hope until today they put me in the ground, that we sent Sonny off in a fashion commensurate with his years of service and his sacrifice and dedication to citizens of Sumner County. He was a legend. To all the employees of Sumner County Sheriff's Office, I see you. Thank you. There were a lot of nice things said about me. My job's not possible without you. I appreciate everything you do. I appreciate the sacrifice you make every day for the citizens of Sumner County and keeping our community safe. It's not unnoticed. I appreciate you. Thank you all.
We'll be in recess for 10 or 15 minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
So, are we going back to number one?
Going back to number one, electing the chairman and chairman pro tem. All right. If I could, if I could have your attention, we're going to get started with the election of the commission chairman and pro tem after we make a presentation. At this time, I want to have the county judge come up, county mayor, and I will stand with him, and we have a special presentation to make. But first of all, I think Mr. Carney.
Yes, it is.
We need someone to make a motion and a second real quick that the.
That 240807.
That 240807, which is the gift we made. Motion second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Okay.
If I could get Tammy and, and her sons to come up, as well as Chief Craddock.
Sheriff.
Eric. Sheriff, Eric. This is, this is quite an honor. I know there's times when I pull out my father's service weapon, when he served and retired from Tennessee Highway Patrol, and, and it holds a special place in my heart. And, and to be able to do this on behalf of the Weatherford family, it is, it is an honor. So, I want to read this. A resolution authorizing the gift of Sheriff Roy "Sonny" Weatherford III's service weapon to Tammy Weatherford, wife of Sheriff Weatherford, as additional consideration for Sheriff Weatherford's commitment and service to Sumner County. Be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on this, the 26th day of August, 2024, that this body do hereby authorize the gift of Sheriff Roy "Sonny" Weatherford III's service weapon, a Glock 23, Gen IV, serial number ZLZ884, to Tammy Weatherford, wife of Sonny Weatherford, as additional consideration for Sheriff Weatherford's outstanding commitment and service to the citizens of Sumner County. And we just, just voted on that. So, thank y'all very much. Tammy.
I just wanted to thank the commission for this. It would have meant a lot to Sonny. He has his father's service weapon and his grandfather's service weapon. So, this, this is another very special addition to Sonny's legacy and what he wanted to have for his grandchildren. Thank you.
No, I was talking about Fregles. But I have told a lot of people.
One went canoeing one time, and Sonny went with them. And I think Sonny almost got drowned. I thought it was him. Yes, he's going to tell the story, but it wasn't him.
We had a number of people, commissioners and office holders. The sheriff was with us. I think maybe that was the trip that Ben was on, Ben Harris. And he very well remembers. It was early in the morning when the Harpeth, not Harpeth, Buffalo River was still very cold. I think Ken Widener was with us, too.
There was the problem.
And our canoes were on a slope on the bank, and the sheriff was sitting on the back of the canoe. And he was canoeing with, of all people, Frank Fregles. And he had just told Frank not to move the canoe because he knew he was in a precarious situation, sitting on the back of the canoe, and the canoe was at a 45-degree angle down this bank. Well, we said it was time to go. So, Frank pushes the canoe in the water, and the sheriff was the first one to go splash into the water. And honestly, I am so glad that the sheriff was carrying no weapon on that day because he, he was so angry at Frank for doing that. But we had a good time, and we all survived. But thank you for reminding me of that. Now, at this time, we will continue with our regular commission business, and it'll be the election of a commission chairman and chairman pro tem. I have, I have thoroughly enjoyed three years of this four-year term, being up here as chairman. I had said it would be a transition, thinking that it would be maybe one year and transition out. It turned out to be three. But I want this last year to, to be able to sit out there and be able to speak and talk rather than being up here and having to referee. And I apologize if anyone over these three years have thought that I was not very courteous or that I was cranky or mean, because I don't really intend to be, but you don't know how difficult it is to sit up here and try to control 24 people out here and the audience and anything else going on. So, please give me a little bit of leverage that way. I have enjoyed being here. I will be glad for, if there's ever any time I can help fill in or anything I can serve, help serve with that is not full-time chairmanship, I would be happy to, to do that. So, at this time, I will accept names for nomination for chairman of the county commission, which will begin, not this meeting, but the next commission meeting in September. Any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'm grateful for your work. And.
I look as you as a mentor, and I'm thankful that you've served as you have. I would like to nominate your pro tem, Jeremy Mansfield.
All right. Motion may and seconded for Commissioner Mansfield. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, nominate Commissioner Jerry Becker.
All right. Commissioner Becker has been nominated. Is there a second? And there is a second. Any other nominations? All right. I'll declare nominations closed, and we will prepare to vote. And we will have, the first one nominated was Mr. Mansfield. He'll be green, and Mr. Becker will be red. And I'll ask the clerk to place that at this time on the board. Is someone, yeah, okay. All right. All right, Commissioner Mansfield receives thirteen votes.
Mr. Chairman, I want to change my vote.
Can he do that? Can do. All right, listen, that's twelve twelve, and I don't intend to be stuck here. We will, we will just need to take a second vote.
Roll call.
Roll call? Well, we could, it just takes time, and it's not necessary. We got just two people.
I'd, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I don't know if this is within the rules or not, but have each of the nominees take five minutes to speak, as to why they believe they would be the best candidate.
Okay, I'll see how the group feels about that. Would you like to take some unnecessary time to hear them speak? Anyone? No, okay, let's take another vote. Maybe someone's had a change of heart, and we'll take one more vote, see where we stand.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Okay. I'm going to make a suggestion. I'm going to take, I'm going to recess the group up here for five minutes. You can talk whatever you want to for five minutes. Go ahead.
I'd like to add another name to that list, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Harrison for chairman.
Who?
Harrison.
Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Harrison has been nominated, is that okay after our nomination? All right, is there a second? All right, that's true.
Clarification, it will still take thirteen to get it?
It will still take thirteen to get it. So we're going in the wrong direction with this strategy. All right, clerk, Madam Clerk, place that on the board.
So he got me yellow?
Mr. Harrison will be yellow. All right.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
I'm going to make a suggestion. All right. Mr. Scho.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to...
Mr. Harrison, instead, replace him with Mr. Lambeth. My, my suggestion is to, my motion is to remove Mr. Harrison and replace Mr. Harrison with Mr. Lambeth.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign? All right, so that, we have that vote coming up? If we go this route, there could be about twenty-two more of these like this, okay? All right, let's, let's go, Madam Clerk, Mr. Lambeth will be yellow.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
All right. Listen, folks, this is a suggestion, and I could care less one way or the other, well, I do care, but I would be willing to push this to... I think, the way I was counting this, quite honestly, folks, just to sit here in a chatty way, talking with you, I kind of figured this was going to be thirteen at best and twelve, twelve votes, so it's about where I thought that it might be. And I think it might take some time for us to get among ourselves and talk and politic a little bit for the position. We, I would, if this will help, I would be willing to serve for, to next month, to the first of next month, and we can go through the process again and vote, but it's up to you, as to whether you want to make that suggestion or not. But we need to move on, we need to do something. One more round? Commissioner, wait a minute, Commissioner Jones?
I'd like to make a motion to do what we did in our previous vote last month, and drop off the least amount of names candidate, and stick with the two with the highest, but in lieu of what Budget Chairman Schoff suggested, give them a few minutes to speak each, because that may be a lot faster than keeping on voting with this stalemate. Maybe give them the chance to convince somebody that's on the fence.
All right. We will, we have four people who have, so we will have to call a roll, but we have four people whose names have been submitted, if they all four want to stay involved, and then we'll go by roll call. Would you like to speak, Commissioner Mansfield? Commissioner Pomeroy?
Well, we only have three, because we took a vote that I think removed Mr. Harrison and added Mr. Lambeth. I second my other commissioner that we do what we've done in the past, which is lower in a three-man race down to the final two. That's what we did just literally a month ago on committee on committees.
All right, are you okay with that, Mr. Harrison?
Mr. Chairman, I would draw my, my name, let's just make it easy.
I want to warn you, Mr. Chairman, he just restated that Mr. Harrison's already been removed, Mr. Lambeth has already taken his place, and now Mr. Lambeth is removing his name, so it is down to a two-man race now.
It's down to two.
Okay.
We'll go one more vote, and then we're going to do something. You may, we need to make a decision. You, you people need to search your heart on this issue, because you may be without a chairman. All right, let's, let's have the clerk put it on the board one more time.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
All right, the vote was twelve to eleven. I think we'll do that, let's take five minutes. Five-minute recess. Commissioner Sullivan?
Ms. Hyde, I'd like to make a motion that if we vote again, and it is a tie, that we postpone this vote until next meeting at least.
Second.
Motion and second in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
No.
Put it on the board. Commissioner Wright?
You know, I've received a lot of response over the vote that we are fixing to cast. Both of these guys would make excellent chairman. Whoever gets the chair position, I would hope and pray that the next one would take the vice. Neither one of them are a bad choice. Neither one of them are. And it's a tough decision, but if we're going to postpone in a month, we need to make sure that you're willing to fill in, sir. Are you willing to stay another month?
I said I'd be in transition, but I want to be transitioned right on out.
Transitioning out?
Yeah, but I would stay another month.
All right, thank you.
Pardon. Commissioner Pomeroy?
Yeah, I'm just speaking to the motion to postpone. I would hope we wouldn't postpone. I don't ever get calls from anybody, and I like it that way. And I've got calls from people in the last month about who I would vote for for this position, and I don't know if I can be nice for another whole month, when they call me. We've got people who call and say, I hate this dude, I hate him, I can't stand him. Then they vote. Such political theater. Everybody knows where you're at. I've spoke to both the candidates, had very pleasant conversations with both of them, I think they'd shake their head. I'm a pretty honest guy. Just vote what you want to vote and move on, and stay here all night until you cave, but come back in another month, nothing is going to change. And the ones of you who've called me think, what in the world have I done if I called Kevin Pomeroy to try to see how he was going to vote for chairman? You know, I don't even serve on a committee, I just kind of come here and, you know, just get set in a corner. So, I mean, I would hope that, no matter, I hate a long meeting more than you do, Chairman Hyde, but let's get it done tonight, because the next time, we're going to be here just as long until somebody wants to show their colors.
I agree, I would love to get it done tonight, but... Mr. Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would also like to echo the sentiments that have been expressed regarding your service as chairman. You're the only chairman that I've ever known. Maybe the only chairman that Ben's ever known, I'm thinking. No, I know that's true. I want to ask you directly, publicly, would you be willing to serve another year at all? I know you've had a lot in the last few months, I'm just asking you publicly, and I hate to put you on the spot...
I'm just asking you publicly, and I hate to put you on the spot, but I do believe you could be the ultimate tiebreaker.
Second. I would be willing to serve, but if it came to a point that a group came to me and said, "Hey, you're too senile or too old or too something. We have somebody else we want in here," I will be perfectly happy with that, but I would, I'll fill in for a while, for a year or whatever, if you all will behave. Second.
I think we have one more vote that's still right.
Yeah, we still have our motion.
Should we see after that, if that had anything?
Yeah, let's vote on the other first and then we'll do these names first because maybe somebody will change their mind. All right, Madam Clerk. Okay, this was to push it for a month. Does the person that made the motion in a second want to withdraw that? All right. All right, we're back on task now. Do you want a board vote or a voice vote, or what do you want? All right, put it on the board. It's me or nothing. It's a yes or no. And you won't be hurting my feelings, folks. You will not be hurting my feelings. All right, wait just a minute. Commissioner Miller.
I just, I'm a little confused. I thought we were voting one more time after the five-minute recess for either Commissioner Mansfield or Commissioner Becker, and then if that fails, then we'll vote for you, correct?
I'll ask the attorney what our last... To vote one more time on the other two. All right, we'll vote one more time on the other two, and then we'll let you, if that doesn't reconcile, we'll let you vote otherwise. All right, place those two names on one more time.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Okay. All right. Well, don't thank me yet. Okay, let's go ahead and put that on the board. Yes or no?
Each commissioner, record your vote. Anyone not voting wishing to vote. Anyone wishing to change their vote.
I sure hope you all behave this next year. All right.
Respecting your wishes.
Thank you.
Because I felt like you really didn't want to do it.
Thank you.
If we don't behave.
Thanks. All right, nominations for Chairman Protem. All right. It doesn't necessarily need a second. Okay, any other names? All right, here we go again. Okay. Oh, Mr. Brown, Commissioner, okay. All right, place that on the board, Madam Clerk. It was green, you were red, Mansfield is green.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Okay. Can you work with me, Mr. Becker?
I'll try.
All right. Your veteran's service report is in your packet. We have certificates of recognition for valedictorians. If there are any valedictorians here, would you please raise your hand? All right, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, and we'll ask if Dr. Langford will... Thought I saw a hand, but I guess I did. Could you have a way of getting these to these people? Oh, yes, we have Mr. Sittler. Would you retrieve? Yeah, our attorneys were very proud of his daughter. Was valedictorian at Hendersonville High School. We can, yeah. All right. Appointment of commissioners to serve on Joint Committee of Commissioners and Board of Education members, and Dr. Langford hasn't left yet, so I was thinking, I put this on the agenda, thinking that I would be leaving and that I wanted to do this before I left. Not a big issue now, but I was wanting to appoint me and Commissioner Sullivan and the Chair of Education to a committee with possibly three board members to do what we once before did years ago that I think created a better understanding, and that was to tour schools and look at schools and see what's there and what needs to be there, and in some cases, maybe what we think shouldn't be there. But whatever, it created a harmonious and much better relationship, I think. So can you do that on your end, Dr. Langford? And so I would like for those three people, if I hear a motion to that effect. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. So when this is set up and visitation of schools occur, the way we did that before, we would visit one or two schools during the day and eat lunch at one of the schools and just enjoy seeing what's going on in the various schools. All right, number eight was the, I think this is the last thing under Chairman's report, is the parks, and I will ask the mayor to explain, if he will, this.
What the verbiage was that was added to the agenda so we can stick to the agenda? A lot of people I asked were unclear what the verbiage was of number eight. What was added to our agenda?
I'm absolutely not sure.
Well, until we're sure, I would move that we do not even start down this path.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner, could you explain what your motion was?
If you would like, Mr. Chair.
I would love it.
I thought we added this underneath the budget, not under yours, but that's okay. This is just going back, the William and Martha Brown Memorial Park, TDEC Grant Brown Trust, Project 50073 continuing project. It's a resolution appropriating the carryover funding from fiscal year 2324 for the Brown Park to the year 2425. It's TDEC Local Park and Recreation Grant, Project 171-5701-91150-560-680-90-57910-50073. This is what was in the budget a year ago. It was passed, went through committee. I'm just wanting us to pass it again because I don't know whatever happened on the rest of committees, but the budget piece needs to continue to be passed, and then we can argue over keys or who has the secret vault, wherever.
And I'm going to ask our attorney if, are you satisfied that that is a legitimate motion?
You all can entertain it as a motion. I've just got... Sorry about that. I've just got problems with the inception of this, and I can give you my legal rendition of what I think needs to happen. However, ultimately, it's up to the commission to make that decision.
Could you give us your feeling?
Didn't we already do this?
This started out as a transference through a will, and then there was a codicil that said the park was to be established using the house as a centerpiece, and that was actually condition number one, that the county, the county itself, would receive $500,000. They would be, to use this money with the historic home currently situated there on being permanently maintained by the county as a park's centerpiece, and that solely for that purpose, the establishment promotion, ongoing support, maintenance of the William and Martha Brown Park. Then it goes into item two, which is a technology trust, and I believe there's been some cross use of words here. The technology trust is a technology trust by itself. It comes into play after this park, and now this park's been merged underneath the guise of the William and Martha Brown Trust. There really isn't such an entity, and the technology trust has certain mandates on how its money's supposed to be spent as well. So we've now got this over 80-acre park that I've seen the plat on, which specific, not plat, but the designs from, I believe, CSDG that specifically exclude the house, and my only concerns are if this gets roped into the school's overall plan for the park, that the house still isn't being addressed as the codicil provided for, and this almost becomes a two-separate park situation where there's the park the school's wanting to build, which is mostly on the perimeter, I believe, but to the tune of 80-something acres with some fixtures and improvements on there like the amphitheater and stuff. And then there's the house, and it could actually be its own separate park that the county's responsible for maintaining. All of this property is owned by the, both the county and the school board. So those are my hangups, major hangups on how this money's being used, how the house is going to be addressed, and the ongoing responsibility that the county has that I do not think that the school board's park overlay is accommodating. So those would be my concerns. But having said all that, again, it's the will of the commission to proceed however they see fit.
Mr. Chairman.
Would it be?
Mr. Chairman, is it?
All right, Commissioner Shoef. Commissioner Shoef.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm happy to deal with this item. I voted to add it, but I feel like we're ahead. I'm planning on discussing this item for the new item four, excuse me, the new item three, under the Budget Committee. So I just think we're a little bit ahead and would like for us to go ahead and get through the rest of the agenda and then address it at appropriate time.
So you're saying, are you saying to put this at the end of the agenda or?
Mr. Chairman, so when we voted to add this, the whole debate was that it was a budget item. I agreed with that comment. Budget is, you know, we're at subheader, we're not even at subheaders yet, and I'm at G. So budget, we're just way ahead. This should be a budget item under Section 12, subsection G. We're just not there yet.
So you'd like to take it down to budget?
If we vote for it now, as long as we don't have to talk about it then. But, I mean, I'm just saying, I just don't want to talk about it twice, wherever we put it. But my original motion was to add it under budget. To be clear, I appreciate our law director, all he does for us...
I like your original.
Was to get it under budget. Because all the other stuff has nothing to do with the budgetary bill.
Let's put it under budget, folks.
What, we were going to open up for discussion, and I have to thank my fellow commissioner for explaining that, but where's the resolution that we're going to vote on? Because when I looked at it back in last year, when we approved it, I was looking at it through a different set of eyes. Now that I've seen all the problems with the resolution, I want to review the resolution so that we can make the proper changes and make it work. Do we have that? Did somebody, I saw somebody took the trouble to put the parks plan out on everybody's table. Is there a resolution somewhere that we can review?
Well, I'm going to make a suggestion that we move it down to budget, and then we'll ask those questions. It will either ask it now or then. It makes no difference, really.
All right, thank you.
All right. So is everyone okay with that being three under budget? All right. Okay, let's go on to report to county officials. Those are in your packet, and now we'll vote for Notaries.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
All right, that's unanimous. Reports of standing committees, Health and Emergency Services.
So these three items, before we go any further, didn't go through committee. However, they are an integral part of this county's safety and operating day-to-day operations. So I wanted everybody to be sure for transparency's sake that this did not go through committee, but here we are on the floor. 2408-08, 2408-09, 24808-10 are all interlocal agreements between the ECD, EMS, EMA, and Sheriff's Office. This allows them, all we would be doing is providing the maintenance on their computer software that they operate throughout the year. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I submit.
A motion made and a second. Commissioner Jones.
I'm not necessarily against this. I just wanted to ask, I'm on Health and Emergency Services. I just wanted to ask the chairman why they didn't go through committee, just so I understand.
Mr. Chairman, so I'm not out of order. I think our comments are supposed to go through the chair, but...
I did not call point of order.
Okay, then, yes, go ahead and ask.
So in order to ask the commissioner, or answer the commissioner's questions, the legal sent these to me asking, was it okay to go ahead and bring them to the floor? And then my response was, yes, this is vital for the public safety inside of the county. It's got to go to the floor.
So we're talking timeframe?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Respectfully, I'd like to ask what the cost to the county, as a member of budget, what the cost to the county is for these three resolutions.
Do you, Mr. Chairman, do you have any idea?
I don't have that in front of me, sir. I think it was all submitted from the ECD with the packet. The director of the ECD is here if we are really wanting to suspend the rules at 9:30.
Do you want him to speak? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign. You can go there, be fine, either place you're comfortable with.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Guthrie with the Emergency Communications District. I believe that the Sheriff's Office fees were about $79,000 per year, and this starts year two through five. EMS is thirty-one seventy-eight, and EMA is four hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Any questions, Mr., uh, Commissioner Nguyen? Do you have a question of, uh?
No, I don't have a question for Mr. Guthrie.
Okay, all right, Mr. Guthrie, thank you. Uh, go ahead.
My question, Mr. Chairman, uh, so oh eight, oh nine, and, and ten, so the interlocal agreement for the sheriff's office, EMA and EMS, are these all pretty much the same?
Yes, sir, that's just the maintenance fee is what.
Okay, can, can we just, I'd like to make a motion to group and approve, uh, oh eight, oh nine, and, and ten.
That was my original motion. When I presented it, I thought, Mr. Chairman, but if not, I'm not opposed.
Motion, do you want to second that?
I'll second it.
Second. Uh, seeing no one in, no one in the queue, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Twenty-four oh eight dash eleven is, uh, agreement with Flock, uh, for the sheriff's office. This is the LPR license plate readers, uh, for the county, and I so move.
Motion in a second, seeing no one in queue, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Education? Education, okay.
No report.
Okay, uh, general operations?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one item coming up. It is, uh, for a, uh, all the work has been done. It's a website for disposing from one department to another within the county where we will save money. And, uh, we call it the, uh, uh, I'm, I'm lost for words here. Uh, anyway, it is, it is a, uh, a website to share used equipment. And it's twenty-four oh eight dash twelve, and I so move.
Motion in a second, uh, all in favor, say aye. Uh, Commissioner Nguyen, hold that vote just a minute. Commissioner Nguyen, I apologize.
I'm not sorry. One question on this, how much did we spend to create this website?
Mr. Chairman, uh, it was something that was already in the works by our IT department. So it was effectively little to none because they had already started it before I even approached them on it. And to maintain it, they have, uh, people who do that. It's a, I'm assured, uh, that it, by Robert, that it's a very, Mr. Tuttle, that it's a very minor effort during the week. Literally, items are sent into them by email. They put them up on the website, and the surplus product is then, um, requested by other departments. It already got used accidentally in, uh, the, the, um, in one of the other departments. And they got, they were able to dispose of nearly all of their stuff within the first day.
Yeah.
So it works.
It's a wonderful way of recycling things within the county rather than disposing of it. Commissioner Nguyen, you are in again.
Yeah, um, I, I appreciate the, the answer, little to none. Uh, it would be good to have actual, a dollar amount to know what little to none means. I know what little to none means to me. It was like under a hundred dollars, uh, is this under five thousand dollars? Are we, you know, just a ballpark would be good to understand like our labor costs that went into this.
Would it, would it be all right with you if we ask, um, Commissioner Klein to look at that and see if he can retrieve some kind of-
That would be excellent, yeah. Just to, we need to know a dollar amount would be good.
Oh, okay, very good. Commissioner Shoef?
It's fine, uh, we've moved on, thank you.
Okay. Let's see, uh, yeah, did it went down to budget? Hold up, this is, no. Do you want to, um, do you want us to approve that with you getting an answer to those questions? Okay, or is, uh, Mr. Klein makes a motion, you make a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye. And we'll try to get those answers for you, uh, by the next meeting. Uh, Highway Committee?
Check, check, okay. Two things, um, about this, we had a meeting, but before I go any further, my email's down. And so please forgive me, just please keep emailing. I, it, I'll, I'll get it up and running. I got a workaround with IT today. They're working with me, they're, they're awesome, and they've been helpful. I just, I just can't get access to it right now. So if you need me, call the number on, on the website, please. And then secondly, uh, we pulled this off there, but I just want to say the reason why is because, uh, you know, I mentioned the, the opposition, and then there's a lot of new information that came out. Uh, it is a timely issue. And so I just request that if anybody's interested in this, it's a roundabout, I'd invite you to come to Highway Commission and just see what's going on with it, make sure that the right decision's made for whatever this is, because I want to make sure the citizen's done right. And it seems like a good project. I just don't want to take anything from the, from the folks around it because they're very much against it right now. So we need to speak about that, so thank you.
All right, committee on committees?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we have one item, and it is the commission committee slate for twenty-two forty-four, twenty-two twenty-five. Uh, so move.
There's motion and a second. Any discussion, Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, several questions and concerns here, um, on committee on committees and the, the slate of candidates, uh, for each and every committee. So I, I guess first I just want to start off with a question, uh, to you, Mr. Chairman. Are, are there any committees besides the Beer Board which have the authority to make decisions for the commission as a whole? So without getting affirmation or, uh, an approval from the commission?
I, I don't know of any except, uh, where law may provide for a particular committee. And I'm just saying that, I don't, can't think of any of those right at this time.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any either outside of the Beer Board. That would, a committee would be statutorily authorized to make their decisions final.
And there may be certain things within other committees, is what I'm saying. But I'm not aware of any right offhand.
Okay. So in, at least my next question, and I'll direct it to you, and then you can direct it to, uh, the committee chair if you would like. Uh, but I, I'm curious as to why, again, District Fifteen has no representation on any committee.
Does the, uh, chair lady want to respond to that?
I do. In committee on committees, um, in our last meeting, I addressed this, and I read an email that was sent by the, uh, chairman of the Ethics Committee. And there was an ethics complaint, and the ruling was that until the commissioner apologized, he was not allowed on committees.
Okay. Now, let me, let me emphasize that whether, uh, we agree or disagree, she gave a response as to what, uh, the reasoning was.
No, and I appreciate that, and I want to commend the, the, the chairman for, you know, finally having the courage to actually state the reason out loud and to the public as to why District Fifteen is not, uh, being represented. But I do find it troubling, uh, that, that the chairman of the committee on committees also has a pending ethics complaint, uh, and yet, that's yet to been heard, and... Oh, convenient, okay, so my apologies. Yeah, I apologize to you for, for that. But I also, uh, what I do find interesting is the chairman of the Ethics Committee, uh, Mr. Todd Alexander, who's running for Gallatin City Council, uh, so freely silences the voices of an entire district by sending an email to only a select few commissioners. Uh, the email that, uh, the chairman of committee on committees is, is referencing, I don't think went out to the entire committee or the entire commission, uh, because most that I've spoke with and, uh, even asked questions about, you know, why are you not serving, uh, aren't aware, um, of, of the, of the email. So what's also interesting are the things that this committee alleged were my underlying motives are the things that this committee is actually doing, uh, in their own actions. For example, you've got, uh, uh, Mr. Mansfield has brought into question Commissioner Lambert's intention.
I think, uh, I really think that what we need to do, we're going down a path here that, uh, it really isn't appropriate for the floor. I think that what we ought to do is, uh, go to the, um, Ethics Committee, get all of the facts from the Ethics Committee, then we will have them come and explain to the commission and report what, uh, what the situation is. Because I'm not sure myself right at this point. I'm not, I haven't been really privy to it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so I think that's the issue is, is that you've got a committee who has made a decision and has passed it around as if it is fact, that is excluding and silencing the voice of an entire district. And this is now going on not just for twelve months, but now we're set up to go for another twelve months.
I, I, I really think that's why, uh, no doubt it, it is serious, whether it is true or not, and it may be true. We need to have the Ethics Committee give us a report on it, on their findings.
I, I would welcome that. Um, you know, because quite honestly, I don't think they got the votes to pass whatever it is their recommendation was. Uh, but we'll get past that, Mr. Chairman. So what I would like to do is I'd like to make a motion, uh, to amend the standing committees list. And it's to amend the current slate and reconstitute all the committees from the floor.
To, uh, do what?
To reconstitute all the committees from the floor.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye?
No.
We'll place that on the board. Yes. I'm afraid so.
What's going to show is not what it's going to be because we've run out of space. It's not going to show what you're voting on up there. What you're going to see on the screen is going to have referred one because everything that was programmed in, people are going to be used up. So she will keep this separate as to what it is actually called. But what you're seeing is not going to be what you're going to vote on. It'll be corrected in the morning.
All right.
Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Fourteen to ten. So would you like to further explain that, Mr. Harrison?
In advance earlier, so, so no.
I'm going to make a suggestion, and I was going to do this anyway, that when we get to the actual makeup of the committees, that what we'll do instead of a slate is go committee by committee. And it won't change what's here. This will be what the committee recommends. And if you want to add a name, and it's just that simple. Don't, don't stand up here and debate it for fifteen minutes. Just give us a name, we'll put it on here, we'll vote, and the people that are elected will be elected. And, uh, that's, that's the only way I see that we can do this efficiently. All right. Uh, Commissioner Janong?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, what is your point of order? Whose motion was it? Mr. Har, uh, whose motion was it? Would you restate your motion?
Uh, so the emotion, the motion was to amend the current slate and reconstitute all the committees from the floor. And not necessarily, and I think you, Mr. Chairman, had, had made the suggestion of we'll just go committee by committee and take amendments by committee, and I'm okay with that.
Does anyone want to change your vote? Okay, that settles it. You want to change your vote? Okay, that, that settles it, we don't need, but look- Now, look, 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 wait, wait just one minute. Wait, listen. It's not my intention to be a smart aleck or be funny or stupid or anything. But if we're not careful, we're going to look like to the general public that they've got a bunch of clowns up here. We're asking crazy stuff. And we're repeating crazy stuff. And we're straining out a gnat. We need to do the people's business and get out of here. Okay, that was not half, so I'm in trouble by saying that, I guess. All right.
Redo all the slates, and that was the motion, and, and not, and basically scrap this. That was the motion that they made, so the, the yeses, it passed.
Well, what I had said, I understand that, and what I had said was we would salvage what the committee did. This is the starting point. And then if you want to add names to it, we'll do it and then vote. And, and like we did on other things, the top ones, get it. You understand that, Mr. Becker?
I do, yes.
Okay. That's the only thing I know to do to get us out of here in, in any decent time tonight. All right, um, Commissioner Janong?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had asked for have my name removed for, from the Education Committee, um, for several reasons. And I emailed the, the committee regarding that. So I do want my name removed, but I did want to make, I don't know if this is the right time or not, but I did want to make an amendment to nominate my, uh, Commissioner Bergdahl for that committee because she had served on it prior and had an interest in it. So I would like to make a motion to do that.
All right, that is the first committee here, and we can deal with that if everybody's in agreement. Is anyone opposed to go ahead and, and voting to add that name? All right, is there, uh, you made- All right, is there, you made a motion to add her name, so we will please put under All right, I have a few other people here. Commissioner Pomeroy, did you have something else? You were still in the queue. Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove my name from that committee, please.
From Education?
Yes, sir.
All right. Please remove Mr. Brown's name. All right, Mr. Lambeth, Commissioner Lambeth?
Yes, I would like to add Don Schmidt and Baker Ring for consideration for the Education Committee, please.
Schmidt and Ring. Commissioners Schmidt and Ring. Any other names? All right, hopefully that's, Commissioner, when?
I would like to add Darrell Rogers to that list as well.
Add who?
Mr. Rogers, please. Commissioner Rogers.
Rogers?
Mr. Chairman, the, the commission, that was not one of my selections, so, I mean, I'll take it if it's the will of the body, but I am not feeling hurt not being on that list.
Oh, okay. All right, we have names on here, and we're going to call the roll. It won't be on the board because we have too many names, and you will vote for seven people. And it's these commissioners, Teichner, Bergdorf, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Lambeth, Schmidt, Ring, and Rogers. From that, you will choose seven people, and you'll call out your seven names.
Can we repeat the list as one more quickly?
All right. Listen very carefully, please. Commissioners Teichner, Bergdorf, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Lambeth, Schmidt, Ring, Rogers. Madam Clerk?
I'm trying to get them all in here. Teichner, Bergdorf, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Rogers, Schmidt, and Ring.
And Lambeth.
Lambeth. Boss. Commissioner Boss.
Seven out of those names.
It's only six. You voted for Wright, Sullivan, Rogers, Schmidt, Ring, and Lambeth. You need to learn more.
Becker.
Becker, okay. Okay, Commissioner Wright.
Teichner, Bergdorf, myself, Baker, Sullivan, Lambeth, and Schmidt.
Okay, I've got Bergdorf, Sullivan, Schmidt, Lambeth. Who am I missing?
Repeated.
Repeated.
Repeated. Teichner, Bergdorf, myself, Baker, Sullivan, Lambeth, and Schmidt. Seven.
Teichner, Bergdorf.
Becker.
Becker, Sullivan, Schmidt, Lambeth, Wright. Harrison.
I ask a question. I think you should speed that up a lot quicker. Can we just put each one on the board, just boom up and down, boom up and down, everybody get a better? Can you do that? Do we have maybe seven? Do we pick it one, two, three, four?
Thank you.
Commissioner Bergdorf, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Lambeth, Schmidt, Ring.
Bergdorf, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Schmidt, Ring, and Lambeth. Commissioner Lambeth?
Sullivan, Lambeth, Becker, Schmidt, Ring, Wright, Bergdorf.
Bergdorf, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Schmidt, Ring, and Lambeth. Rogers?
Bergdorf, Schmidt, Wright, Sullivan, Lambeth, and Wright.
That's five.
Bergdorf, Schmidt, Wright, Sullivan, Lambeth, Wright.
Bergdorf, Wright, Sullivan, Rogers, Schmidt. Did you say Lambeth?
Correct. That's six, Sullivan.
Okay. Klein.
Teichner, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Lambeth, Bergdorf, and Rogers.
Teichner, Bergdorf, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Rogers, and Lambeth.
Correct.
Sullivan.
Becker, Wright, Bergdorf, Sullivan, Schmidt, Lambeth, and Ring.
I've got Bergdorf, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Rogers, Schmidt, Ring, and Lambeth. Do I? You did not say that, okay. All right. Bergdorf, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Schmidt, Ring, and Lambeth.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ring.
Bergdorf, Lambeth, Sullivan, Becker, Wright, Schmidt, and Ring.
I've got Bergdorf, Becker, Sullivan, Schmidt, Ring, Lambeth.
And Wright and Bergdorf.
I have Bergdorf, okay. Wright, okay. Janong.
Commissioner Teichner, Commissioner Bergdorf, Commissioner Wright, Commissioner Becker, Commissioner Sullivan, Commissioner Rogers, and Commissioner Lambeth.
I've got, I've got Teichner, Bergdorf, Rogers, Lambeth, Sullivan. Who else?
I have seven.
No, I've just.
Commissioner Teichner, Commissioner Bergdorf, Commissioner Wright, Commissioner Becker, Commissioner Sullivan, Commissioner Rogers, and Commissioner Lambeth.
Harris.
Becker, Sullivan, Lambeth, Bergdorf, Schmidt, Ring, Wright.
Okay, I've got Bergdorf, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Lambeth. Who are the other two?
Schmidt. And Ring, I'm sorry.
Pomeroy.
I'm abstaining from this process. We're going to sit here and call out 1,100 names in this list that you repeated by, and I appreciate you. There is no other. This is the official business. And we're here. We, we're not doing one. We're going to say, literally do the math, seven of twenty-four, twenty-one, we've got to say seven names. So I'm abstaining from this process and continue. I've been walking out of the ballot. I'm sorry that my constituents, this is.
All right, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Holmes.
Teichner, Bergdorf, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Lambeth, Rogers.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman. Can I ask a question? Does anybody have thirteen votes yet? Can you let us know if any people have thirteen votes, so we can stop, waste our time voting? That may be all.
Commissioner Holmes, I've got Teichner, Bergdorf, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Rogers, Lambeth. Thank you. Boyd.
I agree with Mr. Holmes. I'm going to stay up.
Teichner.
Is there not a more sensible way to do it? Is there, I mean, I, I think committee on committees is the most sensible way, just to direct.
If, if you can think of a more sensible way, then tell me. I don't know.
Can we just put everybody up on the board? I mean, I don't understand why that doesn't work.
It won't work on the board.
Can we step back a little?
Look, we've made a decision, we're in the middle of this vote, we need to go ahead with it. We started down this path when we didn't take the recommendation, so here we are. Pardon?
So each person has to have thirteen votes to get on a committee, correct?
You have to get thirteen votes to be elected. We can drop.
So if nobody gets thirteen votes?
We can drop the low person or two low people each time.
If, if nobody gets thirteen votes, then what happens?
So I, I'm going to make a motion here, speed this up. My motion would be that we reconstitute from the floor Committee on Committees, and then Committee on Committees can convene and bring forward another slate, and they can convene in front of everybody. And we do it that way, I think it'll be a lot faster. That's my motion.
I'm thinking, I'll ask the attorney his opinion, but I'm thinking since we have started in the middle of education that we would need to finish it before we make any other suggestion. Can we after education, you think, Mr. Attorney?
You can redo the slates and try and ratify the list.
Yeah. All right, let's go ahe- let's go ahead.
I'm assuming that we will keep, if we wanted to do that, we would keep the same committees as they are currently constituted for one month, because we'll have committee meetings scheduled before the commission meets to vote on it.
Yes.
Is that correct?
I, I don't know of any other way.
Okay, well, I just, I just want to be sure, so that everybody understands.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
No second. Second. Can you please restate?
We've got to finish the list.
Let's finish the education first.
Let, wait, just a minute, we're going to finish education, then we'll take this up. Okay, good. May well enough of us leave, we won't have to stay in session. All right. Go ahead.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I mean, this is, this is crazy, but how in the world are we in the middle of voting on a passed item that we passed? I didn't vote for it, we passed it. So I think we got to suck it up and do it. We don't do another committee, another vote in the middle of the vote. It's the strangest thing in the world. It doesn't make any sense at all. And so we already voted and approved to do this process. I think we could easily put each person up on there, vote them up or down, and one out, one in there, three or nine, and then we just move on to the next one. But there's, this is crazy to stop.
My problem, my problem with that, I agree, the, the avenue we started down is crazy.
It is, it is.
But we're in the middle of one now, and unless the attorney tells me otherwise, I would think we had to finish the education that we started on. So let's not have any more point of orders, and go ahead and finish this. Go ahead.
Commissioner Teichner.
We got to finish all of them. That, that was the motion, and I hate it, but we got to stay here until three or four years later. Sorry.
Maybe not. All right, go ahead.
Commissioner Teichner.
Okay, I vote Commissioner Wright, Commissioner Becker, Commissioner Sullivan.
Commissioner Lambeth, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Bergdorf, and me.
Okay, I've got Teichner, Bergdorf, Rogers, Lambeth. Is that correct?
We did it twice. Yeah, sorry. Myself, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Lambeth, Rogers, Bergdorf. Wright.
Commissioner Wright, Commissioner Becker, Commissioner Sullivan, Commissioner Lambeth, Mr. Bergdorf, Commissioner Schmidt, and Commissioner Ring.
Wright, Becker.
Commissioner Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Lambeth, Bergdorf, Schmidt, and Ring.
I want to agree that I have the committee have thirteen.
Right, Sullivan. Right, Sullivan.
Yes.
I've also got Shannon with thirteen.
Crazy idea here. Our commission, you know, what else could we do right here? Could we go committee by committee and nominate names, and then everybody write down who your slate is, turn it into you and Ms. Carolyn, take a five, ten minute recess, where you guys can pile it, take the top seven, and then we vote on it as a whole?
That's not transparent.
I don't think that would work. Uh, you couldn't do that, it's not transparent, it isn't open. I don't know. And I think that would take quite a bit of time, Commissioner.
Got a way to speed it up, so if we could?
I, I think what we need to do, this is going to be my suggestion, is what was said earlier. We're in the middle of education, we need to finish education, and then send the slate back to.
Committee on Committees.
Committee on Committees, and let them bring back another slate.
Sullivan has thirteen, and Lambeth has thirteen.
Right. What about Wright?
Has thirteen?
Rock's got thirteen.
Sullivan, Lambeth, and Wright. Will you please call them out as they hit thirteen? That was three, they went on at the same time. Really did.
Lambeth, Sullivan, and Wright have thirteen.
Sullivan, Wright, and Lambeth have thirteen. So it would be wise to shift your votes, if you have them, to someone else.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm going to tell you when I'm going to vote for education, but before we start the next slates, because that is what.
because that is what we voted on, and we gotta move through all the slates. I do think it prudent, and I don't, I guess I don't understand technically why, for example, for education, we couldn't have put Commissioner Taichner's name up there, yes or no? And then, move on to the next one, Commissioner Bergdorf, yes or no? In that way, you're not doing this entire laborious process. You're just putting one person's name at a time for each committee up on the screen. And it's a yes or no vote, and we'll know at that point. I think this will speed this up a lot more. That is my recommendation for the next round, Mr. Chairman. So hold on, I'm still on, I'm still. So, but I'll give you, go ahead and give you my picks. And I'm, I'm still gonna say, Lambeth, Sullivan, Becker, Wright, Bergdorf, Taichner, and Ring.
Taichner, Bergdorf, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Ring.
And Lambeth.
Thank you. Wright has fourteen. Bergdorf has thirteen. Becker has thirteen. Sullivan has fourteen. And Lambeth has fourteen.
We only need two more people, the attorney has advised me, so we need to, you know, the way you vote will make the difference in going ahead and rounding this committee out. Which ones have thirteen votes?
The ones that have, Bergdorf has thirteen, Wright has fourteen, Becker has thirteen, Sullivan has fourteen, Lambeth has fourteen, Taichner has six, Rogers has six, Schmidt has nine, and Ring has eight. Correct.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman.
At the end of this, could change their vote.
Yes.
So, everybody needs to just vote for who they want.
Yeah.
Okay.
That could happen.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Commissioner Bryant.
Abstain from this ludicrous motion.
Well, I guess this is why we're here, when committee on committee meetings are about ten minutes long, and people have questions. Just, Mr. Commissioner Ring and myself, thank you.
Commissioner Bergdorf.
Rogers and Ring.
Okay, Bergdorf voted for Rogers and Bergdorf.
No. Rogers and Ring.
Rogers and Ring. Okay. Mr. Hyde.
Rogers and Ring.
Commissioner Becker.
I will vote for Schmidt, Ring, and Rogers.
Commissioner Shob.
I don't remember who had thirteen, so I'm just gonna call them all out that I had marked. Bergdorf, Schmidt, Rogers, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Lambeth.
Bergdorf, Becker, Sullivan, Lambeth.
Bergdorf, Schmidt, Rogers, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Lambeth.
Did you only vote for six?
Uh, Mr. Wright, Rogers, I can vote for six. You can vote for seven? Yeah, I can vote for seven. It's over, it's free to him. Bergdorf, Schmidt, Rogers, Wright, Becker, Sullivan, Lambeth.
Commissioner Jones.
Taichner. I'd like to also comment that the way this process is going, there's possibility that commissioners on the upper end of the numbers may not get a vote in some of these other committees. If thirteen are selected before they get to number twenty-four or twenty-three. This is such a flawed process.
Taichner.
Taichner has eight, Bergdorf fourteen, Wright fifteen, Becker fourteen, Sullivan fifteen, Rogers ten, Schmidt twelve, Ring twelve, Lambeth fifteen.
Does anyone, if you're seeing these votes, if you wanna change a vote, or if you had five votes, you wanna add one, whatever? Any changes?
Taichner eight, Bergdorf fourteen, Wright fifteen, Becker fourteen, Sullivan fifteen, Rogers ten, Schmidt twelve, Ring twelve, Lambeth fifteen.
I only voted for two people. I'll vote for Commissioner Schmidt and Commissioner Ring.
You want to change yours to?
I want the other two votes, I'm just adding to, to more my vote.
You're gonna, Schmidt and Ring?
Mm-hmm. Oh, I already have Ring.
Yeah, so we added Schmidt.
All right.
So he's got thirteen.
So we already voted Ring?
So we've got Taichner with eight, Rogers with ten, Ring with twelve.
Mr. Hyde, I'll change my vote to Ring from my name.
All right, then we have Bergdorf with fourteen, Wright with fifteen, Becker with fourteen, Sullivan with fifteen, Schmidt with thirteen, and Ring with thirteen, and Lambeth with fifteen.
Yeah, how many is that? That's good, all right. Well, the education committee is at least established. Now, does anyone, at this point, wanna make a suggestion how we would proceed? Commissioner Taichner.
Mr. Hyde, I have a perfect solution, it'll be very quick.
Well, let me hear it.
Okay. Any of these people on here on the next committee, we go through, and out of honor, we took an oath to our county and our country, surely we can keep our word on this. Vote exactly the amount of numbers, and we can go through one at a time, but only vote, if it's five members, if it's seven members, if it's eight, only vote that many times. And we can go back at the records and see if there's anything wrong with that. And the citizens can hold us accountable, just vote, vote each person, and you don't have to vote the whole number, but you gotta not vote more than that. I know it's a little crazy, but it's a lot less crazy than what we're doing right now. So can we, can we please just do that, please?
Well, if I knew what you were saying, I would know whether it was crazy or not.
Okay, so next, okay, General Ops, we'll take, we'll take all the nominations, if there's anybody nominated on there. Put the nominations on there, and everybody write them down. And then, as they go through, you say, Commissioner Moss, and we vote him up or down. You go David Klein, we vote him up or down. And so we go through each one, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven to vote on. We cannot vote eight, per commissioner.
But what if people are added to the list?
What, they, they won't be added, once we add them right now. Like, this is where we'll nominate them, and then we can only vote for the number allotted, and we cannot vote for any others. It's gotta be our word, so we can get the people out of here.
I'll say it immediately.
Yeah, restate it if you need to, but yes, please. Build the committees.
Each nomination, each person build their slate.
Yes. No, 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 that would take forever. No, uh, take it? Yeah, yeah, I think you're saying the same thing. You're saying the same thing.
Wait, wait just a second, let's let him speak and clarify.
I think it, I think honor system, I think you just go through it and vote. I mean, nobody's gonna vote for eight, for nine people on an eight-person committee. Just, or seven, you know what I'm saying? So like, just vote for the person, up or down, boom, move on, up or down, no discussion, zero discussion. Just up or down and get it done. Yeah.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
I'm in the queue, Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
I'm in the queue, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna make an amendment. To the amendment. I moved a group and approved Gen Ops, Highway, Financial Management, Health and Emergencies Services, Budget and Beer Board.
Motion and a second. You can work with two amendments, you can't have more than two.
No, that's the second one.
Pardon?
That's my motion, Mr., and we got a second, so.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
No.
Commissioner Harrison.
Name from General Ops.
Withdrawing your name from General Ops?
Yes, sir.
I'm, look, we need to do this, we need to send this slate back to the committee on committees, and have them rework it. Someone wanna make that motion? There's a second.
You need to procedurally vote it, please, sir.
Everybody for this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Put it on the board, call for division.
All right, go to Division of the House.
I made a motion to approve and approve, Gen Ops, Highway, Commission, Financial Management, Health and Emergencies Services, Budget and Beer Board.
Everyone knows what you're voting on now, right? All right.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Yes or no? The noes have it. All right, the First Amendment was what?
The total number of commissioners who are allowed on that board is the total number we get, and we vote them up and down as they go through, and we only, like, we say Commissioner A, yes or no. Commissioner B, yes or no, and we go through, and we, and if, we can skip, but we can only vote them out. It's, it's an easy thing to understand. It, it's not gonna be any better if we send it back to committee on committees, because it's gonna be the same debate next month. We gotta take care of it tonight. I don't care how long it takes.
I do. Okay, let's, uh.
Yeah, I would like to make the amendment, I would just like to make the amendment.
Uh, well, slightly.
He's got the floor first, go ahead.
I'm, I, what I would like to do is continue the Constitution process, but only for committee on committees. And then we, that committee on, the new committee on committees will be established, and we would send all of the rest of them back to the new committee on committees. So we continue this process, but just for committee on committees. And once that's done, everybody.
We have a committee on committees.
We would reconstitute it here. Out of order. Point of order. You can do it.
Yeah, we, we elected committee on committees already. Previously.
And that's my motion, if somebody wants, if nobody's gonna second it, then it fails. Because the whole reason we're here is because we're unhappy with the way committee on committees did it. So let's change it up a little bit, send it back, instead of all doing this all over.
All right, this is what we're going to do. Is there any motion on the floor right now? Commissioner Taichner made a motion, did you second that? All right, put it on the board, that's the only way of. Go ahead.
This is gonna be so chaotic, there needs to be a way to guarantee, I know the nature, he's asking people to be honest, but after sitting here with so many votes, they're gonna happen, people are gonna lose track on how many times they've voted. There needs to be a process, either stand up and count to yourself, and sit down when you reach seven, or something. Somebody needs to be holding somebody accountable, because a mistake can easily be made. If you vote eight times, then you've done something illegal, and, and you may not even know it. So there needs to be some kind of a check on, to make sure that people only vote seven times, or eight times, or however many that committee holds. There's gotta be some kind of a check there, so I'm holding out for amendment to that, and I don't know what it is.
Each individual commissioner will record their votes here, and then only vote on the ones they got an underline under. It's that simple, I don't think it's that big of a deal.
All right, we'll put it on the board and vote on it then. Commissioner Mansfield.
Well, I don't understand what he's explaining, so I just, I don't understand that voting process, but.
I don't either, that's why I'm gonna vote.
My motion, I'm gonna make another amendment. I just moved to approve General Operations Committee slate as it is, that's my motion.
We have a motion and a second already, Mr. Becker seconded. So we'll put that on the board and vote that up or down. It's Taichner's motion.
I made amendment to his motion, and my motion was accepted as it is. If there's a vacancy, deal with that next month, committee committees, but just the slate as it is. That was my motion.
All right.
And he got seconded.
Our motion and a second, we'll vote on that. Go ahead and put it on the board, no matter what. He's voting on the whole slate, is that not right, the whole slate?
No, just Gen Ops.
For Gen Ops.
It's just Gen Ops.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
All right, we have two committees, anyone wanna make a suggestion for Highway? Uh, Commissioner Harrison. The motion and the second, Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to restate, I will be resigning from Gen Ops, effective immediately.
You did what, I didn't understand what you. I, I didn't understand what you said about Gen Ops.
And I will...
Taking your name off Gen Ops?
Yeah, I'm taking my name off Gen Ops effective immediately.
And that can be filled by Committee on Committees and we can vote on it next month. All right, Highways? All right, is there a second? All right, a motion and a second.
Um, the Highway Commission over the last two years has run pretty good. There's, there's a good consensus following, um, Mr. Ellis and it's... A lot of it is advisory, um, in its nature, but we've, we've all done pretty good with, uh, debating that process out and understanding, putting information out for the public. But for the most part, Mr. Ellis has, has pushed things through the way that they should be done, and he's done a good job with that, so I, I would recommend that it stay the same.
All right, we'll place, uh, a, any other suggestions? All in favor say aye? All right, Commissioner Schmidt?
If there's any Commissioner here that would like to serve on the Highway and take me off of it, I will not be offended. My thought process on that is, is my district has very little county road in it. Um, so if there's a Commissioner out there from the northern part of the county that would like to submit his or her name in place of mine, again, I will not be offended. I just think that we need more representation in our northern counties.
Okay, we'll keep that in mind. All for, uh, approval?
Aye.
Pose? All right, Highway Commission has it. Was this on Highway?
Yeah, it was, yes, sir. I wanted to add a name to the Highway, please.
You... We, we had voted by this other amendment to do that through the next month of, uh... That's what the chamber elected to do. To do it, fill it through the Committee on Committees. Is that not right?
No, I don't think so. This is for Highway, we're talking about Highway now, are we not?
All right, all right, on Highway, what were you wanting to do?
I would like to add Mr. Harrison to that list.
Second.
Who would you take off, Mr. Schmidt?
I would take, uh, Tim Jones off.
Mr. Schmidt has volunteered to come off and Mr., you're saying replace, uh...
With Harrison.
Mr., I, I will second that as, as long as the, if the motion is to replace Mr. Schmidt with Mr. Harrison.
That's fine.
All right. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign, we have a Highway Committee.
Slate as it is.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
No.
Uh, say that the ayes have it. Um, Health and Emergency Services?
So moved to accept as is.
All right, accepting it as is in a second. Uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign. Budget?
So moved to accept as is.
Second.
All right.
I'd like to put forward an alternate slate as follows. Bergdorf, Klein, Boit, Schoeff, Pomeroy, Lambeth, Becker.
Read that again slowly, please.
Please, yeah, slowly.
Commissioner Bergdorf, Commissioner Klein, Commissioner Boit, Commissioner Schoeff, Commissioner Pomeroy, Commissioner Lambeth, Commissioner Becker.
Did everyone get that? All right, so...
We have two slates.
Slate number one will be green. Slate number two will be, uh, the amended slate will be red. Uh, Commissioner Becker, was this, Commissioner? Pass?
Well, I'm good.
All right, uh, Commissioner Bergdorf?
Slate number two is Commissioner Schoeff's slate, okay, thank you.
That's red.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, the original is green. All right, we'll place that on the board.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
All right, uh, that pass is, uh, thirteen to ten. So that is the, uh, we need to make note of those, uh, seven names, uh, on budget. Beer Board? Someone please make a motion to accept. Uh, second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, pose light sign, okay. Well, we'll try to get that slate out to you. All right, uh, anything else in the Committee on Committees? Legislative?
Resolution twenty-four oh eight dash fourteen is to amend the standing rules and procedures that came through legislative at the beginning of July, um, I so moved.
A motion, is there a second? All right, motion and a second, any discussion, Commissioner Wynn? This motion is going to require sixteen, because it's a change of rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, you know, I applaud our efforts to try to legislate every possible scenario. I think we do need to have probably some guardrails up as far as, uh, um... Chairman elections in the committees, uh, or replacements, but I feel like this is probably, uh, just a little much, you know, to, to have to have, uh, an appeals process and then there's a confirmation by the, the full commission. Uh, we don't confirm the chairman when they're originally elected, it's just committee business. So, you know, letting the committees handle their business, I think, seems to be a, a pretty decent process. Point of order, Mr. Chairman, I'm at the floor here and I've got my colleague decides that she wants to join me.
All right, go ahead.
Um, but I, I, I don't see that this requires a, a massive overhaul and, and added layer of bureaucracy and, uh, just something else to have to keep up with. So I, I'm not going to support this, uh, just for the fact, I think it's just, it's, it's more than what's actually needed, sir.
Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, I, I think it's sort of in line with what Commissioner just spoke. I would like to make an amendment to delete item four. So keep, so keep points one, two, and three, but then delete item four. So that's an amendment there. I, item four, I guess for the audience that, that don't, item four is a chair or vice chair who has been removed can appeal to the full commission to confirm or deny without debate the action taken by the committee. So my motion is to amend this list by removing item, striking item four.
Is there a second to that? Our motion and a second? Any discussion on that particular issue? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose?
No.
I think the noes have it. All right, um, we will, uh, Commissioner Becker?
Since it's still there, I think it probably needs to be determined of, i- is it just, when, if it goes back to the full commission for an appeal, is that a majority, two-thirds? It doesn't state it here, so I would like to add that it's two-thirds, the appeal would be two-thirds.
Second.
All right, motion and a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose?
No.
Uh, we may have to put that on the board, that was close.
Can you restate the amendment one more time?
Wait just a minute, folks, and listen to, uh, the restatement.
So my amendment here is, in, on item number four, says a chair or vice chair has, who has been removed can appeal to the full commission to confirm or deny without debate the action taken by the committee. My amendment is to confirm or deny by two-thirds majority vote of the committee, commission. So it's two-thirds of vote instead of a majority is item number four. Is that clear up? Okay, thanks.
We still will vote on that on the board, yes for that amendment, no otherwise.
It seems like the, uh, the way that the chair got there was with a simple majority. And if they're appealing the process of getting thrown off, it seems like the simple majority of the commission would be enough to keep them there, not make it extra hard by making it two-thirds majority to, to save their spot. They got there by a simple majority, they should be able to stay there by a simple majority. It just stands to reason.
Thank you.
On this, this is not removing the person from the committee. This is removing the person from their chairmanship or vice chairman. So the previous Commissioner who just spoke was, uh, it wasn't intentionally incorrect, but he was incorrect, because we don't, we don't vote on chairs and vice chairs of specific individual committees.
Right.
So just wanted to clarify, this is not removing a person from the committee, it's just the chairmanship which we don't vote for.
Right. All right, Commissioner Schmidt?
I do have a question and I may have a motion based on your answer. Was this as a result of the special called meeting y'all had that morning in legislative? It was in a morning session? Is this what we're, is this a result of what we're discussing tonight? Was it that mo, was that in the morning? Is, if someone can...
Was that the meeting, uh, Commissioner Mansfield? Yes.
It was in the morning. I'm going to make a motion to send this back to legislative, because there were some people that were upset that they felt like they didn't have adequate notice to attend the meeting, because they were, they felt like this was ho, held in a time where most people are at work and they can't attend, and there, believe it or not, there are some members of the public that want to attend this and have an interest in this. So my motion tonight, as a result of the citizens' concerns with that, is to send this back to legislative to be scheduled in an evening that's convenient for the citizens to attend if they so wish.
Second.
Motion and a second? All right.
Mr. Hyde, can I speak on that amendment?
Yes.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, this is an opportunity for the citizens to speak on that right now, because it's, it's on the agenda. It already passed through. And so no one came to speak on it. And I, I'm just saying the obvious, but no one came to speak on this at all in this immediate moment that we're voting on it. It's an agenda item, it's in the supplemental material. We need to vote on it. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jones?
I just wanted to speak to Commissioner Becker's motion, uh, if this, uh, amendment fails.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Just as a reminder, this first meeting was held during the day when most people are at work. They felt railroaded with this process, they felt like they were being just, you know, kind of kept to the side and not informed of what was going on. Whether we think that's right or not, I think the right thing to do in the interest of the citizens, if we're going to talk about transparency and have them have an opportunity to review this more time, is let them review it, schedule it, schedule it back to legislative. And if those citizens wish to attend that in the evening, they have all, all the invitation to do so. Let, you know, let's, let's do the right thing. I'm just telling you, citizens that spoke to me felt like this was done not on the up and up. Whether we, whether it was or it wasn't, that's neither here nor there. They didn't feel like they, they felt like this was just being rams through at a time when they could not speak on purpose. So I'm speaking on behalf of the concerned citizens that reached me and making the motion to send this back tonight to legislative when they can do it and when people can attend meetings in the evening. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm still in the queue.
Commissioner Rogers?
Main, main amendment.
Well, I, to the Commissioner's point of, it was during the day, he, he's exactly right, it was. I took vacation time, uh, to come and be here, so I think when there's a will, there's a way. So I won't be supporting this, let's just vote it.
All right, a yes would be, uh, affirmative for this and, uh, no would be against it, so. Amendment, mm-hmm, all right.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
Uh, fifteen negative votes, so we are back to the, uh, main motion. Commissioner Jones?
I appreciate Commissioner Becker, um, explaining that further to me, but the principle still stands. On some of these committees, the majority is going to be three people, four people that could take a chairman out. And bringing it to the commission where they need a simple majority of thirteen people seems like a pretty high bar for them to keep their position as chair. And I don't think asking for sixteen, when only three or four per people, as little as three people could have taken them out with a majority, sixteen seems like too high of a bar. I think it's fine the way it is, just to leave it as a simple majority, so I won't be supporting his motion.
Well, it's probably, needing sixteen votes, it's going to stay as it is anyway, I would imagine, so... Uh, any other discussion, Commissioner Harrison?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a point of clarification, one thing we may have overlooked, since you are going to remain chairman, your position on Committee on Committees will need to be filled tonight.
That what?
Your position, since you're going to remain chairman for the coming year, you occupy a spot on Committee on Committees, we will need to fill that, correct?
Uh, that would be correct.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, not, no, you don't have to, because if the committee appoints, uh, the chairman to a specific committee, uh, they, they can do that, they have the power to do that.
Okay, just making sure.
Any other discussion on this? Let's put it on the board, it's got to receive two-thirds vote.
Can you restate the...
Restate the amendment, whose amendment was it? All right, restate it.
Okay. So my amendment that we're about to vote on is on item number four is to make it two-thirds vote instead of simple majority.
All right. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose?
No.
I must say the noes have it unless there's a divi, call for a division of the House. All right, put it on the board.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
All right, it receives twelve votes to eleven, so that's, uh, does pass. Oh, pardon me, it does not.
Fails.
Yeah, it fails, okay. Now we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion? All right, place that on the board, Madam Clerk.
This is twenty-four oh eight fourteen, second. Each Commissioner record your vote.
Uh, that does pass with two-thirds vote, sixteen to seven. All right, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Resolution twenty-four oh eight dash fifteen, approve the Millersville EMS MOU. This was, uh, voted on last month or requested by you, Mr. Chairman, that, um, we reach out, you asked me to reach out to City of Millersville. This is simply just to move this whole EMS problem along of saying that our, our guys can't sleep in this facility, and everybody was complaining, well, we don't have permission, we don't have permission. So I went and asked them, do we have permission? This is basically saying, yes, we do have permission to do whatever we need to modify that building. that building at our cost for the EMS guys, which Commissioner Klein has stated on the floor, he doesn't think it costs more than fifteen, twenty thousand dollars to reconfigure that, which saves a lot more money than wasting it on a RV. So I so move.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, questions here, um, is the City of Millersville, they required to adopt a resolution with the same language?
Ask, ask that one more time.
Is the City of Millersville required to adopt a resolution with the same language?
Yes, they're required to as well, they'll run this up, and then we will have given the authority for the mayor and the director of EMS to execute on our behalf, and then they'll have, uh, their city manager, fire chief, and mayor will execute on their behalf once they've ratified it.
Okay, um, a, a, and I've got just a few amendments, so bear with me, Mr. Chairman, this'll be like the first one. I wanna go ahead and I wanna insert, uh, amendment and insert, after the first sentence of section ten, this agreement is only valid after matching resolutions have been adopted by both parties.
All right, is there a second to that amendment?
Are you, are you agreeing that that is a legal way to do it?
I believe that would be redundant because it requires-
He says that he thinks it's redundant.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we've had agreements where we've passed them and other municipalities have not, and then we've had some issues to where we don't know who's, who's responsible for what. I just think from, from a legal perspective, let's just put it in writing, that way it's clear, it's crystal. There, there'll be no questions, there's, there's no confusion later on.
Well, there was not a second, so we'll just ask rather than delaying, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, there is a second. Okay, go ahead.
I'll direct this to you, Mr. Chairman, for a question for Commissioner from the district fif, from fifteenth district, sorry. Basically, I think, can you correct me if I'm wrong, he's wanna put, he's wanting to put this in writing just as another added layer of protection to the taxpayers. Yeah, it's, it's redundant, I get it, but it's still, at the end of the day, please correct me if I'm wrong, it's just adding another layer of protection and certainty to the taxpayer by putting it in writing, and that's why I'm seconding it, seconding it. Thank you.
Um, seeing no one else in the queue, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
No.
Put it on the board, Madam Chairman.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
All right, receiving twelve noes, uh, that does not pass.
Uh, so, next question, what recourse does the county have if the city were to give a thirty-day termination notice the day after the improvements are completed?
I'll ask the attorney to respond to that.
So your question is if they turn in a thirty-day notice after this is executed, is that correct?
Correct.
Then in thirty days, this would terminate?
And we would have no agreement whatsoever as far as the use of facility?
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying the contract would cease to, the MOU would cease to exist in its, its ratified form.
Okay. So I'd like to add an amendment to, under the duration and termination, insert at the end of the second sentence, and shall repay the capital outlaid according to, um, I've got like a twenty-year amortization schedule, I don't know the price of the contract or the, the improvements, here in twenty-five thousand, I don't know if we've got firm bids on that, but, uh, what? That would be my amendment.
All right, restate that for the attorney, one more time.
Uh, amendment under their duration and termination, insert at the end of the second sentence, and shall repay all capital outlaid according to a twenty-year amortization schedule.
All right, is there a second? Hearing no second, that, pardon? All right, you're seconding.
Yes.
Okay.
And my comment is, and again, please correct me if I'm wrong, it's simply, again, you're just looking out for the taxpayers because, and again, correct, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we build this thing for twenty thousand dollars and two weeks from now, Millersville says, eh, we changed our mind, we don't want you to be here anymore, then we just wasted taxpayer money, and, Mr. Chairman, I'm directing that at you just to see if that's what my commissioner from the district, fifteenth district is, is that the whole premise behind him putting that here?
Yes, sir, we've got this great memorandum of understanding that has absolutely no teeth or protection for the county, Sumner County. Uh, essentially, all it does is put us on the hook financially for all the, the pairs, all the improvements, and all the maintenance henceforward on the improvements. Uh, so the amendments that I'm offering here are just offering protections for Sumner County, uh, and I'm honestly surprised that, you know, there's not support for it, but uh, we'll, we'll let everybody vote their conscience on that.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
No.
I, um, I would say the noes have it unless there is a division of house.
Division of the house.
Division of the house, Sam.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Receiving twelve noes, that does not pass. Do you have another?
I'm still going, Mr. Chairman, I also have a-
All right.
He could ask all these questions, he can.
No, uh, he has the right to-
Hundred percent, that's right.
Speak on the floor.
So, are we currently paying any rent for the EMS space that we have occupied?
There, there's no rent, I don't believe, involved, no, he, he's not sure, and I'm not even-
And is there any kind of legal agreement in place as far as use that, that says that we can use this space for any period of time for no amount of money?
I would defer to AGMS, but I believe we've been using that facility for like fifteen years, so.
Commissioner Rogers, are you aware of any?
Sorry, you talking about the monthly fees that we're paying? There are monthly fees, uh, Budget Chair may have that, well.
Or the mayor may have that. Um, there are monthly rental fees that we're paying there, uh, at Millersville Station.
So, uh, do we know if we have any kind of legal agreement as to what the fee structures are, the terms of use?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay. So, uh, we'll try this, uh, again, just to put, put a little bit of protection in place, amendment under use of facility, insert after, as an EMS station, at no cost to Sumner County for a period of twenty years or until agreed upon by both parties.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Harrison?
I'm on the main motion.
Oh, okay. All right, seeing no one in the queue, we'll place that on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
And that fills with thirteen nay votes.
All right, uh, last one.
Okay.
One more, last one. Uh, so we've got this split maintenance agreement that, uh, it, it's gonna create a lot of gray and just finger pointing, uh, when it comes to who's fiscally responsible for repairs. Um, I mean, we can look at our Hendersonville Library situation that we were going through with who's responsible fixing the AIDS rack unit. Why is that? Well, it's because of documents such as this that we're refusing to amend, add protections to the county, but I digress. Uh, so I would just ask the question, why would the county enter into another agreement with another municipality that puts everyone in this type of situation? That's a redundant question, I'll need an answer, but I will offer an amendment under maintenance and repair, and insert the word "not" after the county shall.
Is there a second? All right, motion and a second. Seeing no one in the queue, we'll, uh, Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner Rogers may know the answer to this, who is responsible for the maintenance of the building right now?
Mr. Chairman, if this-
Can he answer that, if he knows?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, I was trying. Um, that is currently the responsibility of the City of Millersville, I, I believe that's correct.
So, to, just to understand, this sounds like we're just, um, doing our innovations on a building that they already take care of because our EMS crews are in there and it's necessary for their health and safety, but nothing else is gonna change with regards to who takes care of the building, we're just helping them out with some funding to get the building in good shape, we're not-
Yeah, I guess you could call it, we're trying to be a good neighbor.
No confusion there.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just say one more comment on that and point out on number, item number four on this is maintenance and repairs, and I'm all for being a good neighbor, but there again, you know, when we create an MOU that's gonna create confusion in the future, I think we should at least get ahead of it. This, this document clearly states, the county shall be responsible for ongoing maintenance and repairs of the improvements set out in section two above made to the facility. Uh, so here we are, accepting responsibility for maintenance and repairs of any improvements we do. Uh, so we are putting ourselves on the hook, not only are we paying for the improvements, but now we're gonna pay in perpetuity to maintain and repair these, so, um, that's all I've got there.
Chairman, I'm in the queue.
All right, Commissioner Manfield.
So, just, this is talking about section two, which is, the county agrees to make all necessary upgrades to the facility to ensure it's code compliant and suitable, suitable for use as an EMS station. So that, the part that, the county's, has pulled their, the EMS out of there, they've been there for almost twenty years, never had a problem, all of a sudden it's just magically overnight a problem, fine. So, um, so if, if it's gonna be a problem for the county, they're pulling, the county's pulled out the EMS and, and wanting to spend fifty thousand dollars on a camper, I mean, it's, it seems pretty logical if the county is going to alter a building, that the portion that is being altered, the county is responsible for the maintenance, because this is not the county's building, and so the way I interpret this, it's saying the portion that's actually being modified is, all this is asking that they're in charge of, because the City of Millersville, uh, had a, a previous, uh, city mayor and inspector or codes guy who, they built out their original fire hall wrong, uh, they get, as soon as, uh, things happened in, in Millersville, uh, they get an anonymous call saying, oh, this building's been fine for years, but then all of a sudden their, their fire station number one is not code compliant for people to sleep in it, so they've had to go to twelve-hour shifts and move people out. And then this is the same thing that's happened here. I think the, the, Millersville made the county aware, just wanted to let you know, this is what the fire marshal said about this building, want you to check this one out. So the county has pulled out, even though they've been there for twenty years, nobody's ever, ever had any problems here. This is really the county impetus to make this happen, so they're giving us the space for free, is all I know, I don't, I don't, I've never seen any receipts, I'd, I'd like to see receipts of what's being charged to the county, my understanding was it's free. I know the Hendersonville, to my understanding, doesn't charge the county anything for our EMS stations to be there, I may be wrong, that's, I've, I've thought I've heard the mayor say that before, uh, of Hendersonville, so, again, I could be mistaken on that, but I would like to check, uh, but I, I, it just doesn't make any sense that we would ask somebody for a building we don't own to put our people there and then make them liable and responsible for the changes we're making to their building, I, I just don't understand that, so, that's my point.
Commissioner Boy.
I would have to, uh, side with Commissioner Nguyen. Um, there's a lot of things here, I, I think, I think what we're talking about changing on that building is putting some windows in so that they can get out. If we put windows in, are we gonna have to, like, if we're gonna maintain them, then we're gonna come back and put windows in in twenty years or ten years, or if they break the window, we're gonna put the window in, I would have to agree with Commissioner Nguyen, it's their window. I, I feel like we're, we're fixing it for them, we're gonna put a window in, but I don't wanna improve it, and I don't wanna come back and repair it, I don't wanna seal it, I don't wanna weather strip it, I don't wanna do any of that, put a window in. Now, the other things that are in that room, there's a toilet in there, so are we fixing, I, I mean, it, it's not, I agree with Commissioner Nguyen, it's not clear, if the toilet breaks, because we were in there fixing that wall, now are we responsible for the toilet forever? It's not very clear what we're responsible for here, if we're gonna pick up just in general maintenance and improvement of that area, then I would wanna see a list of what I'm gonna be responsible for. If we're fixing the outside of the building, are we now outside responsible for the siding if it comes off? It's, it's a lot of things in there, so I would have to agree with him. Thank you.
County attorney.
Yeah, I just wanna be very clear on four, it says, uh, responsible for the ongoing maintenance and repair of the improvements, that's a very important term of art for property, and then you get up to two, which talks about the improvements, and it specifically says suitable for use as an EMS station. So that's all we're being roped into on this contract, is whatever it is they're allowing us in, because my understanding is they're broke and they need us to come in there to make this, uh, missions ready for EMS personnel, so that's all we're focused on as part of this MOU, and that's all we're agreeing to maintain and repair are those said improvements, I just wanted to point that out.
Commissioner Klein.
Chairman, and along the line of, of our attorney, this is really a very small, simple thing, we're talking about either cutting two windows in the back wall or cutting two doors, possibly a hallway on the other end, we're going to be in there, we're gonna be the only ones using that, we're the only ones using the sleeping quarters, as Mr. Manfield pointed out, we're, to the best of our knowledge, we're there for free. I don't think it's a big deal either way, I don't think Millersville would fight it, it's, you know, you're talking about a door that's gonna last twenty years, I just don't think this is something we should be arguing about.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, with that being said, um, I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Nguyen too, I want somebody to explain to me where I'm wrong, but if that door lasts twenty years, in twenty years, they can come ask us to replace the door because we're the ones that installed it. That seems silly that we're gonna own a piece of a building because we own half of a room inside that building. I think if we're giving a gift to them, they'd be more than happy to take on responsibility to maintain it, especially if it's a very small gift that puts them in compliance, I think they'll be grateful for it. I don't think there's anything wrong with making it clean to where we're not responsible for repairing the elevators at the Hendersonville Library, but, uh, the schools are responsible for the air conditioner system and, and convoluting all of it like we've already done, we've been through this before. Make it simple, make it clean, give them a gift, and ask them if they'll pay for it. If they refuse this, we'll talk about it next month and give them something else, but it just seems cleaner to, to do what Commissioner Nguyen is, is amending it to here.
All right, Commissioner Becker.
Thank you, sir. Um, I know it's been talked about, and I apologize, I don't see it in here, though. What is, from a budgetary standpoint, like, what is the estimated cost for the improvements? There's a line item two, like, I, I don't know, is this fifty thousand or is this more?
Does our budget, uh, person have a question on that, or legislative, one of the two?
I'm just, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going by what Commissioner Klein is going, he's gonna look at the building, um, I've been over there, um, and just what he was estimating and trying to get. This MOU is, we're here because nobody will say we can go in there and do something, everybody's complaining from the floor, we can't go in the building because we don't own it, it's just the stupidest thing ever. So this is an MOU to say, we can come in the building and do what we need to do, reconfigure for EMS, it's not rocket science. I don't get it. And furthermore, when it comes to maintenance repairs, I'll amend the amendment to say, as long as we occupy the building.
Second.
Under section four.
Adding that as a, to the, uh, document as a motion and a second, is there any discussion on that particular issue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign, all right. All right. Commissioner Teichner.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this may help us all too a little bit. The duration and termination, number five, it says, "This MOU shall remain in effect..." This MOU shall remain in effect until terminated by either party. So I think... I actually... I really do agree with the logic behind what the commissioner from District 14 had said, and I think he makes a great point, because that could go on forever. I just think this might actually be a safety net too, because we can terminate at any moment, so.
County mayor.
I just want to make sure that we understand, we do not own anything over there. There was a comment made that we have high ownership. We have no ownership of that property whatsoever. It does remain in the city of Millersville's name.
Correct. Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. You know, I agree, this shouldn't be complicated, but as we've learned, I mean, words do matter, and this MOU isn't stating clearly what the intent is, or as it's been stated, it's just, hey, we just want to come in and help you. This is essentially creating a situation where it puts the county on the hook for... We don't even know a number as to what is even a cause. So we've got a blank check, apparently, for the facility, for the upgrades, and then also too, just for the... Any of the repairs and maintenance moving forward, I guess now while we occupy the facility. So again, if we're there for the next 20, 30 years, you know, a door goes bad, well, we're on the hook for it, you know? It's... To me, if we're going to gift the city of Millersville, and I'm not opposed to that, is gifting that, I think it's the right thing to do. If we've got the funds, you know, to do it, by all means, let's help out and do it. But I think while we're doing and making the effort to create an MOU, let's do it right, you know? Put the things in there that needs to be put in there, and let's quit breezing through this crap, and then we've got to come back, you know, later on and try to solve problems. I mean, it's something in here about working in good faith, and we've seen how we were able to do that so effectively with other departments and other agencies. So let's just do it right, you know? And today's solutions are tomorrow's problems, and if we'll just fix this, we can minimize tomorrow's problems. That's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Becker.
Got a question, if the committee has considered... Does this open us up? Because I know we... The county utilizes some space at other cities, fire stations and so forth. Is this possibly set us up for paying for maintenance and repairs and improvements at other fire stations beyond this one? The way I'm reading it, I can see a... I can see the city coming... A different city coming to us and say, hey, you know, the county is paying for the ongoing maintenance of these items that are needed to get up to code. And I could sort of see them having some leverage on that. Or am I maybe misreading it?
I wouldn't think so, based upon where we are and what stations we use, but we would have to make the same kind of judgment and agreement with those people. So it would just be a one-on-one decision.
Yeah, I would like to refer this back to committee to maybe consider some different language there.
All right, there's a motion and a second to refer this back to committee. Any discussion on that? Anyone in the queue wanting to discuss that? Commissioner Klein?
Mr. Chairman, I want to remind the commission, what we're trying to do is get permission to do things in the building. We have not estimated, we have not gotten architectural costs. This is ground zero. I think... I think we're really making a mountain out of a mole here, hill here, and I mean, we're just trying to help out Millersville. We've been in that building for 20 years. All of a sudden, we discovered that the sleeping quarters were out of code compliance. It's going to be a very minimal amount of money to correct that. I just think we're beating a dead horse here, but you know, what the will of the commission is, I just want to make sure everybody understands that this is just the first step to figure out what the costs are going to be.
All right. Commissioner, anyone else in the queue that's already in there that is speaking to this? All right, Commissioner Mansfield.
I just want to reiterate, I mean, we talk about wasting money and wasting time, and that's exactly what we're doing around here, is we're wasting money. There's appropriation for $50,000 for rental of a camper, which, you know, we might go to buy a camper for cheaper than that. But we're here because everybody's complaining, we can't get into the building, we don't want to get in the building, liability if we go in the building and do something without permission. This MOU is simply saying, "We have permission to come in the building and modify the space for our EMS department to go back to sleeping in the quarters so we're not wasting taxpayer dollars on a RV." That's all this is. It's because this body wanted that to happen, and now this body's just throwing this stuff around willy-nilly. It's just ridiculous. It's such a circular, illogical path. It's mind-blowing to me, Mr. Chairman. So I think this is a waste of time. This is an MOU just basically saying, yes, we have permission. I think we just need to get it done so that then gen ops and budget can figure out and get this done quickly so we can get EMS back in there so now we're wasting further taxpayer dollars. Because when you put this off, you're wasting taxpayer money. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Would you please raise your hand if you want to speak to this? Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm just surprised, because if this was a school board project, we would be up in arms about, why don't we have estimates? Why don't we have timelines? Why don't we have all this stuff that's required? Because... And I understand what's being said as far as, well, this document just says that we give us permission to come in. It doesn't say that. It clearly states that we agree to make all necessary upgrades to the facility. Nothing's outlined here. We are committing ourselves to upgrade this facility. To what dollar amount? So I don't think these are illogical requests. I don't think that this is irrational. I think this is just a step to where, hey, if we want a document that says, hey, we just want permission to come in, credit document says, hey, we want permission to come in, and let's vote on that. But no, this is making commitments, short-term and long-term commitments, financial commitments for the county, and it's not outlined. And if it was any other body, we'd have a huge issue with it. It would have all this pomp and circumstance about, oh, blank checks and irresponsible spending. But yet, we sit here and we'll do the exact same thing with the shoes on the other foot.
Okay, what we need to stick to at this point is...
So, Mr. Chairman, I think it needs to go back to committee so that we can figure out what it is that we need.
The chair is speaking. We're on the issue of whether to send it back, and we're getting way off on this discussion. All right, anyone else want to speak to that? Commissioner Mansfield, this is on sending it back.
Yes, sir. This is not about contracts, estimates. We can't even do that yet. Because of this body said that we're not going to move forward with estimates, budgets, contracts, because we don't have an MOU. I mean, you want to talk about the school board? School board wouldn't... That, we moved forward to an illegal MOU that was never ratified by the county commission and went forward and appropriated money unlawfully. So let's talk about that, so that when you come to do something correctly, we're trying to do something actually correctly to allow to start the process of ground zero before you can even get to the estimation. This is what you got to do, and this is the terms. If we want to modify that building for us to be in there for EMS, they're saying, hey, whatever you modify, we just don't want to be on the hook for it, and you're going to... You county going to come in here and do something and then make us pay for all this stuff? I mean, I would... Our Millersville, I would probably do the same thing for any other city. If we're going to go into a city-owned building and we're going to make modifications, then they would want to make sure that we're not going to like, keep them on the hook and be liable for something we do to their building that we don't own. And that's what this whole process is about, Mr. Chairman. So I think it makes a lot of sense to have an MOU to start the process. Sure, if we want to have something simple, say, you just have permission to get estimates, but this was all about a process because we can't even get estimates. And this is just... It's belaboring that process for no reason. I mean, this is ground zero. It just says, "You have permission to come in here and do estimates, and then go back to gen ops, go back to budget, go through the estimation process, go through the bidding process, and then you get the work done." But we can't even do that yet.
So I'm assuming that everyone else in the queue is on the main motion? Commissioner Jones?
No, it was, but it changed.
Commissioner... Pardon me, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Shou.
I was in the queue, you can't call a question.
He was next in the queue.
Mine was blinking. His wasn't.
You'll have to keep blinking. Okay.
It's actually red, so I was not blinking.
Questions been called, we'll put it on the board.
This is on Commissioner Becker's amendment.
This is called a question.
On whose amendment?
It's called a question. Yes or no?
Okay. Got you.
Each commission record your vote.
Eighteen affirmative votes, so now we'll vote on the amendment to send it back.
Each commission record your vote.
All right. Fourteen negative votes, it will not be sent back. Commissioner Janong, you're next in the queue.
Commissioner, Chairman, I was next in the queue. We got cut off by call question. My light was blinking, I got cut off by somebody that wasn't in the queue.
Call the question.
Go ahead. We hadn't heard from Commissioner Janong. I want to remind everyone that some of us speak a great deal, and others sit there very quietly like Commissioner Janong and don't say anything. And the rules give the chair the right to call on certain people that have not had a chance to speak on the issue. But go ahead and speak, and then I'm going to call on Commissioner Janong.
I understand. So we have a second... We have an amendment on the floor with Commissioner Mansfield's that I seconded that said, "As long as we own the building..."
No, occupy.
"As long as we occupy the building." Okay. I want to withdraw my second to that amendment, and...
We've already voted on it.
No. You had one different than Jerry's.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, regardless, regardless of all that, I want to try to clean this up. Our only sticking point, I think everybody wants to fix the building. I think everybody wants to get this done, and time is of the essence. I don't want to send it back to committee. We all know there's a need there, and it's all about whether or not we want to own maintenance of one-twelfth of a building or not. That's ridiculous. We give a warranty for the work that we did, tell them we'll do the maintenance for up to a year, and then they take over responsibilities. There's... 20 years from now, nobody's going to know which part we altered and which part we didn't alter. It's ridiculous. We're tying ourselves up in another Hendersonville Library debacle. Make it simple, let them own everything that we do to their building. So I'm ready to vote on Commissioner Nguyen's amendment, and I implore somebody to call the question on that.
Commissioner Janong.
Thank you, Chairman. We... This was brought up a long time ago when we were in Health and Emergency Services. These four people were sleeping in quarters that were not appropriate, and everybody had... The sky was falling, and we, you know, the world was coming to an end, and we decided we were going to fix it, which we should have. We should have fixed it then. We should have taken care of it then. This should have all been resolved then. We're running around in circles, we're arguing, we're complaining, we've got emergency management people having to sleep in a camper because we can't make a decision on damn windows. I am tired, and I'm just going to say this, and I'm very quiet most of the time, but I am very tired about spending our time, spinning our wheels at the expense of other people and employees who need a safe place to sleep and do their job. And if we can't come to a conclusion, then what have we become? I'm tired of it. I'm tired of all this arguing, back and forth, back and forth. What is this... What are we accomplishing here? These people are at risk. They need a safe place to stay. You're arguing over apples and oranges and a few windows. Well, hell, I've got windows in my shed, I'll give you a couple. But come on, people. We need to take care of these people and get it done now, not later, not a month from now, not argue about it next month, not argue about it the second month after that. We've got to take care of this today, just like we had a sky is falling situation months ago. This needs to be done and done promptly. That's all I got to say, I'll shut up.
Thank you. County attorney.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that the 30 days that was brought up by a couple of commissioners before, that works both ways. So if at any time this thing isn't working for us, we got the right to turn in a 30-day notice and walk away from this. So this isn't something that's going to go on in perpetuity if you're not happy with it. So just FYI, that 30 days works both ways.
Commissioner Shou.
Call a question.
All right, question's been called and second. Place that on the board.
There's no more amendments, Tim.
There are no ma...
There's no amendments.
No, there are no amendments, I don't think. I don't think it went anywhere, though.
It's been voted down. Mr. Chairman, I can... Here's the sequence of events. Mr. Nguyen made an amendment. Mr. Mansfield amended that amendment to change the parameter. He agreed with... Wanted to add some parameters around the nature of it, and Mr. Mansfield's checks and balances were that we would stay... That we would only be responsible for maintenance so long as we occupied... As our personnel occupied the building. So that was the parameter. That amended Mr. Nguyen's amendment. As amended, we would need to pass his amendment, which is basically just passing the same thing that Mr. Mansfield said earlier.
So this is to conclude the discussion on the amendment? All right, place that on the board.
Each commission record your vote.
Let's call the question. Yes.
That is affirmative, so we will vote on that amendment.
So the main motion now? As amended? It's his amendment as amended.
His amendment.
Okay, on his amendment.
All right. You're voting now on the amendment? Pardon? Would you state your amendment again, please? Go ahead, Commissioner Miller.
I thought we decided there was no amendment. This is voting on the main motion, correct?
Amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. We've already voted on mine, it changed it. Just trying to... And this is just information. This is chaining... So this is a chained amendment. Mr. Mansfield's amendment changed Mr. Nguyen's. We voted to change it by voice vote. I think it was unanimous. So while we're on Mr. Nguyen's amendment, Mr. Nguyen's amendment is the exact same thing that Mr. Mansfield said. We are just doing this in order to procedurally move the amendment forward. So it is the same thing that we voted for earlier. That is what we're voting on.
All right.
Each commission record your vote.
Now we've got the... Have we got the main motion now? All right, we're ready to vote on the main motion with no one in the queue.
Each commission record your vote.
All right, Commissioner.
Resolution 2408-16 is to accept requalification for the State of Tennessee Three-Star Program. I so move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign?
Resolution 2408-04 was pulled off consent.
It was to appoint Judicial Magistrate Robert Fitzgerald. I so move.
Okay, motion and a second, Commissioner Wynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Robert Fitzgerald, I've asked several people who Robert Fitzgerald is, and no one knows that, who we're fixing to vote on that I spoke with, so. And I think it's, just for due diligence, if we can just maybe get some background, because I don't see it in our packet, I didn't see it in legislative packet. So, can we get some background, please, on Mr. Robert Fitzgerald? And as to why is he qualified for Judicial magistrate?
All right, I'm gonna make a suggestion. Commissioner Becker, if it's all right with you, the head magistrate is here, and he could speak to this if everyone's in agreement. All right, everybody in agreement to hear him on this person?
Yep.
Say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Just a little bit of knowledge on this person.
Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald is, he's highly educated, he's highly intelligent, he's a resident of Portland, Tennessee. He has a background working for the Kentucky State Police, as well as Sumner Schools, Davidson County Schools. I, I believe he was retired or semi-retired, and then came about this way to try to get back into the workforce.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that okay, Commissioner?
It's more than I had a few minutes ago, so I appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Becker.
Quick question, is this a, is this replacing a magistrate, or is this like a brand new position? If it's in here, I apologize. Is this, is this an additional, or just replacing a current one? Whoever can answer that?
Uh, go ahead and answer that.
We had somebody who left a position, so this is just filling that term.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. All right, Budget.
Can I make a motion for a five minute recess?
Uh, yeah, let's take five minutes.
Yeah, I'm killing it. What's up? Turn that off while we're here.
So I don't, I don't know how we send it back to the mayor's office, but that's where it came from. But just also though, this is just an appropriation for the rental of the camper for the EMS in the Millersville. And I understand we're government, so if we appropriate fifty, we're probably going to spend seventy-five. I understand that, but I would like to say that if, just because we're appropriating the fifty, doesn't mean we're going to spend it all at one time with the hopes that we just passed the resolution that we can work with Millersville to get that building repaired rather sooner than later. So that would be my hope, but if it's the will of the body to send it back, I mean, I, I don't know what I'll do with it, or we will do with it.
All right, there is a motion to, uh.
I'll amend it to send it budget instead of.
Okay, all right. Uh, Commissioner Boy.
I was just wondering if we could ask how much this camper is costing? Cause at, at some point I thought somebody told me it was like two thousand a month. So how much does the camper cost?
I have no idea about campers.
Mr. Chairman, I think that would be directed to the county mayor, I think you can give us.
All right, County Mayor.
Yeah, it's right at three thousand including the gas. So, uh, I think the, the fifty thousand was a number thrown out there by budget. Uh, and it's just to keep it so we don't have to keep coming back. We only spent it three thousand at a time. Uh, once we were able to get them back in the building, then we turn, turn it back in. Uh, hopefully we won't get to fifty thousand dollars, we'll get this problem resolved quickly.
All right. So we're, we're on the motion, uh, Mr. Becker.
Um, just want to make sure if we send it back to budget, are, are we currently, like, is there going to be a gap then of our payment? Or do we have, we have some money set aside and we need more here in a couple of months? But if, if we're, if we're out of money, I don't know, my question is, like, do we, like, can we send it back? Or do we actually need to act on it tonight?
Mr. Chairman, we, we need to act on it, like, we need to appropriate some amount of funding for it in order to give, in order for us to continue to use that camper.
So it is needed.
It is needed, now you could argue, you know, so the history of this from the last meeting was when it first came up, there was no amount on it. We didn't have an amount, we just said we needed to be able to provide the, uh, the county mayor with the ability to, uh, to continue that, those operations out there.
I'll amend my motion, Mr. Chairman. Six thousand dollars and send the rest back to budget.
How much?
Six thousand dollar appropriation, if it's less than three thousand dollars a month, that's two months, so.
All right, and.
I'll make, appropriate six thousand dollars and send the rest of the request back to budget for a.
Was there a second to your, okay, you're in agreement with that, okay. All right, any further discuss, County Mayor, are you still wanting to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, uh, put that on the board, uh, you will. All right, we're moving right on. Okay.
So we're, we're, we need to vote on the main on that, I think that was an amendment.
Pardon?
We, that was an amendment, we need to vote on the main. We, do we need to vote on the main as amended?
Oh, that's right, yes, we need to vote on the main motion now.
I'm going to make a motion to reconsider.
A second.
Here's why, budget, uh, finance director just said, probably need to make it nine or twelve thousand dollars, so I'm going to make a motion to reconsider, uh, that vote, so we can, I can.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like, sign, okay.
Reconfigure that motion to say twelve thousand dollars and send their, send this back to.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like, sign, all right, we're back where we were.
Main motion.
Now we're on the main motion. All right, we'll put that on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
All right, that passes, uh, go ahead, uh, Commissioner Shug.
Okay, item number three, uh, which was added earlier, this is, um, excuse me, I'll read this, if I can find the document. This is, uh, for the William and Martha Brown Memorial Park, um, a resolution appropriating carryover funding from fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for the Brown Park project to the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, I assume.
Motion and a second.
I want to get in queue on this, uh, cause I have an immediate amendment to it.
Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that this, uh, this item be withdrawn since the maker of the motion decided to take the rest of the evening off. And evidently it's not that important to him, even though he didn't make the motion.
Uh, was there a second to that?
Yes, but.
All right, there was a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like, sign.
No.
All right, put it on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Mr. Chairman, please note, I'm, I'm in queue as well, I was trying to get in queue to make an amendment to this.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Mansfield.
Um, it's a long and storied history here, Mr. Chairman, I want to talk about transparency and letting the public come to meetings. Um, this first, just pushed through the previous commission, no public notice really, no discussion, no committee process, um, to appropriate this. The first was for the hundred thousand dollars for this master parks plan, I voted no on that, uh, for reasons stated earlier, uh, because of the master greenway plan to steal people's property because of this park. Then a board was created, or a board wasn't created, a committee was created for a board that doesn't, doesn't exist. And I guess, I guess, I would like just confirmation from the law director, uh, whether a parks and recreation board was actually technically ever even created in order to put these people on, and the September twenty twenty minutes, uh, was a parks, um, board ever created by resolution or statutorily as we do all other boards or committees in this county?
Are, are you wanting to ask?
I would love it, if you wouldn't mind, uh, asking the law director that, Mr. Chairman, I'd love that.
Yes, sir, uh, the, uh, statute requires that it shall by resolution or ordinance, of course, we use resolutions here, uh, that, that's how this needs to be created, this, uh, Parks and Rec Board. And the other inconsistency we have is it shall consist of five persons, I believe there's seven people listed in this one. So as far as, uh, a resolution ratifying this, this board, I, I cannot find one. And I've been looking pretty extensively for that, I've seen minutes back and forth about the approval of certain members of this board, but my position is if, if the board doesn't exist, everything you're trying to do under that guise is probably invalid.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so you have a, a, a board that doesn't exist, and you have parameters for grants based on something that doesn't exist. Uh, additionally, there was an MOU agreed to that never came before the county commission that was never ratified, that commits the county to money, uh, which was on, this cannot be done statutorily, uh, it's not possible. You know, I found out about this MOU, uh, for this, this agreement back at the school board meeting in February of twenty twenty-four. First I ever saw about it, and, and this went through the previous commission three or four times, uh, again, I, I voted against it those times for the reasons stated. Um, you know, Chancery Court, uh, Oliver has ruled, county confirmed state law, the county commission has authority over county properties, not the county mayor at that time. Um, so that was the, uh, an improper MOU from that standpoint. The problem is you got an invalid MOU, you have a parks board that doesn't exist, so we were trying to go through the process. Uh, it's also wrongfully, uh, stated that we dissolved the parks board, we didn't, that was a, a, a lie being promulgated, uh, out there on social media. Uh, we did not dissolve something that didn't exist, we simply said it didn't exist, so there's no action to be taken. So this was in committee for a while to try to get a parks board and do that, you'd brought forward a resolution, you kind of withdraw it, I kept it on the agenda to see what we could do to get this along, because I knew it was in the general operations with Commissioner Klein, uh, Commissioner Jones had been working really hard on this, um, to try to, how can we move all this forward and, and keep to the will and codicil of the five hundred thousand dollars is not for the trust, it's not for the, the schools, it's for the county to fix that house up and create a park, we voted in April of twenty twenty-four to create a park, we voted to do that. And according to the, a finance director in an email he sent last October nineteenth, or, or, uh, 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 Ms. Browning from the finance director, director's office, um, said for Liberty Creek Park, uh, when, asking, uh, Ms. Norfleet, when will we be receiving the five hundred K from the trust? Per David, we need it before we start signing contracts, David will not approve any POs until the funds have been received. And so it was stated by the director of schools, hey, as soon as you say you're going to do a park, we said we're going to do a park. So that, that, if we want to talk about just sticking in here into the law, I get tired of being lectured by people saying we're breaking the law or we're not, but then when it's convenient for them, they just want to break the law and not stick to it. We're just trying to get on the right path because what is done previously was so screwed up, wasn't ever done properly, wasn't ever even voted on or vetted, it was just done. Just, hey, we're just going to make crap up, and that's exactly what they did in the previous commission. So we're trying to get us on the back, right track, uh, if we're going to properly establish a parks board, great, do it. If you're going to do an MOU, great, do it, but do it properly, because they don't exist. If you want to talk about a grant, technically, that we can't accept this grant money because it, it, we didn't meet the requirements for the grant, and I'm making that argument. So we need to get on a lawful path, uh, second, it was never presented this grant, I don't even know what it says, I've never seen the grant, ever. Haven't seen it, and it was a part of that resolution that the previous commission voted on, I voted against it, because I hadn't seen it, didn't have any supporting documentation, didn't have any estimates, it had nothing. And then you look at this master parks plan that got approved, like I said before, it has no money even allocated to that house, which is what the will and codicil talk about they want it for. So you're doing everything wrong, we shouldn't be talking about this here tonight on the floor, it needs to be back in committee where it's supposed to be, because that is what's right and what's lawful to get it figured out, if it takes another month, but unfortunately, Commissioner, uh, Klein has tried to get the county mayor to come to the table, and he refuses to do it because of the people that were on the email, talk about politics and gaming and being childish and juvenile, it's like, oh, I don't like the names on this email, because I don't think I'm getting, I'm not willing to go to the table. Okay, I don't want to be lectured by people and talking about this type of stuff when we have bad examples and bad precedents set, when we're trying to be adults and come to the table and make stuff happen, and it's not happening. I'm just sick of the hypocrisy, I'm sick of the double standards, um, I just wish this would be moved forward as presented, as it's been, try to get done. I believe Commissioner Klein has done a fantastic job of trying to move this forward, both as a planning chairman, as the general office chairman, um, and try to solve these problems, working with the director of schools, working with the county mayor, working with the law director's office, work with the finance director's office, everything's been screwed up, we've got confirmation this wasn't even legally binding, so I'm not going to be supporting anything that moves this forward tonight, um, for that reason alone. I think it needs to be sent back to committee, uh, I'm going to make a motion to defer this until next month and send it back to budget committee so it can be done properly, um, so I guess that I'm, I'll make that motion.
Motion defer and a second, who, who did this, uh, Commissioner Miller, a second. Uh, any discussion on, uh, this particular thing? Commissioner Jones?
I can confirm everything that, um, Commissioner Mansfield has said is true, I've dived deep into this issue. I doubt anybody has read as thoroughly into this as I have, I've got the will right here, um, I just wanted to read, read a couple of excerpts out of it. Um, I bequeath devising, I, I, I give devise and bequeath all of my property of every nature and description and wherever situated, including all real, personal and mixed tangible and intangible as follows. I leave the sum of five hundred thousand dollars to Teddy and Tammy Adams, that's A, under item two. And B says I leave the remainder of my estate to the Sumner County Board of Education. Wait, that's the old will. That's the will that the school board is operating under. It was amended, Part B was amended, six months later in March of twenty sixteen, to I specifically bequeaths to Sumner County, the county, the cash sum of five hundred thousand dollars to establish, maintain, establish and maintain a public park located at two twelve hundreds lane, Henderson, Tennessee, with a historic home currently situated there on being permanently maintained by the county as the park centerpiece. The park shall be known as the William and Martha Brown Park, this bequest shall be a restricted fund held by the county in a separate account and used solely for the purposes of the establishment, promotion, ongoing support and maintenance of the William and Brown, William and Martha Brown Park. Nowhere in there does this say anything about cross-country, an amphitheater, anything like that, but I know where it says to start, things can always be added later. All of this has been ignored, we're sitting out of compliance with a, uh, honorable man's, uh, gift to the county. And lies are being told about it, things are being said that they can't give the money because the trust says they can't. I'll move on to the second part where it creates a separate trust of eight million dollars, I devise and bequeath all the rest and residuary of my property to the Sumner County Board of Education, said bequest shall be held in a trust to be known as the William and Martha Brown Education Technology Trust administered by the trustees in accordance with the provisions here and below. So that's the trust that's held by the mayor and whoever the director of schools is at the time. And they're holding both funds, they've been doing it for six years. That house has been sit, rotting for over six years, almost seven years now, I guess it is seven years, March of, March of, uh, I mean, uh, yeah, sixteen to, to twenty, uh, six years, okay. So we haven't done anything to fix that house, the windows are all broken out, I've been in that house. It looks like hobos have been living in it, it needs a lot of work, the windows are all boarded up, half of them are broken. It needs a lot of attention to be made a centerpiece of the park that Mr. Brown's talking about. I have no idea what this is, this grand master plan of a park that we're trying to force through.
Let me, let me interrupt you just a moment with, what we're talking about right now is should this go back?
I'm given all the reasons why it should go back, because there are so many legal issues with this, they all need to be settled in committee. I've laid out the case why the keys to that house and that money should have been turned in to the general operations committee six years ago at the, at the acceptance of the will. I've been reached out to by members of the Brown family, I've been reached out to by members of the Latimer family who owned the house before them, who, if you're familiar with Latimer Lane, they owned all that property back there. They all want to see this house, this historic home taken care of, there's so much history with that, with that home, rich history. And I'm afraid that by the time this grandiose park is finished, that house will be fallen in and irreparable. It needs to go back to committee, they need to comply with the will, we need to get to, get started on it. No one in general operations ever, has ever said we don't want to build a park, we want to start where Mr. Brown wanted us to start. We need it to go back to gen ops, thank you.
All right, uh, before we move on to Mr. Becker, please, uh, take conversations, we've got about three or four people in the queue as to why this should or should not go to committee, all right, Mr. Becker.
Thank you, I've got a couple of quick questions, and then I'm going to add a potential amendment to this amendment. So where, where exactly, because this is going to help me determine if I want to send it back or not, so bear with me. Where exactly is the five hundred thousand dollars, but?
I'll let the attorney answer that.
The attorney?
Last I was told it's still in the trust, we've made requests, uh, I believe at least a couple of times asking for the money to be sent pursuant to, I believe a resolution came out of asking for that money, and we've received no feedback whatsoever.
So it's in a, it's in a tru, if I understand it right, and I'm not a completely knowledgeable about trusts and all that stuff. So it's, it's in, the money is in a trust that has no ties to the county or to the school system right now.
As far as I know, it is part of the technology trust, which is the second provision of the codicil.
So, so the five hundred thousand is lumped in with the eight million?
I'm making a guess because nobody's told me otherwise.
Does, does anyone, that'd be nice to know, for sure, is there anyone here?
Mr., wait just a moment.
I'm asking.
Mr. Mayor, uh, do you have knowledge of that? Are you capable of answering that?
Yeah, it's held in a trust account, uh, we're waiting until, uh, we're able to get this bid out and know that we have a project to, uh, invest in.
Is, is it lumped, is it lumped together, or is it a separate? I, 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 I'm one, I'm asking the question.
All right, uh, Mr. Mayor, do you have an?
It's in one trust account.
Okay, thank you. Um, second thing is, I, I think if I heard it correctly, and I apologize if I didn't, there was a comment earlier about a committee never was formed, so I've got the minutes from September twenty-first, two thousand twenty, that shows a committee, there's Oliver Berry, Mike Brown, Dean DeWitt, Aaron Eller, Dr. Mary Day Reynolds, Tom Tucker, and Sean Utley, and that passed, that committee passed nineteen to three. So that, so if I heard it correctly, that committee never was formed, it's the, the meeting minutes from September twenty-first, twenty twenty, so that, that takes care of that. I would like to make an amendment that if, if we send it back, that it's, it will, they can't, I guess, they can't just sit on it, so if we send it back, I want it back to the full commission no later than the October full commission meeting.
Okay, so you're putting a timeframe.
Yeah, correct, so no, no later than the October.
Is there a second to that amendment? All right, there's a motion and a second, any discussion, please raise your hand on that specific amendment. Uh, Commissioner Jones?
I would just ask the maker of the motion to, to tidy it up a little bit better, um, because the frustration is going to be, once it goes to committee, how do we proceed with it when they will not comply with the will? The directive from the committee, from legislative, from everybody that's talked to the mayor and the director of schools is to comply with the will, give the money, give the combination to the lock, so we can start the work, nobody's intention is dragging their feet, we want to get to work. We realize the value of a historic home, and we want to cherish the will of Mr. Brown. So how would you tidy that up to where I can vote for it? I, I would, I would like to, to, I would, I would amend it, come back next month if you can make that happen, I, I, we want it to happen. So contingent upon the, the mayor's and, and Mr. Langford's compliance with the will, that we get the stuff, that it comes back within two months, is that what you're saying? Would you amend, would be, be amicable to that, because I'll second that, or it's already seconded. Can he answer that, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Becker.
Yeah, the, and I, I thought about saying the September meeting, but I, I pushed, the reason I pushed it out in my amendment to the October is, is sort of to your point, is like, let's, let's have the, the people that have the responsibilities to figure it out and, and quit, quit blaming each other, or whatever you want to call it, and, and so that get, October meeting should give us time, let's figure it out, let's get all our ducks in a row, and it comes back here for October, so.
That's my question, because I'll vote for it with that intensity on there, because otherwise, there's no way they're going to let it out. We've been asking for six months. We're not the ones holding up the show, the narrative going out is that the commission is holding up this park, and we've, ever since we've known about it last December, we've asked to put legs to this park, and we cannot get what we need to do.
Okay, we. Let's, let's move on with this, we're just carrying on a conversation between two people, and we need to.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, appreciate the effort.
All right, go ahead.
I, I definitely appreciate that, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, I can read the will and probably interpret it one way, but I, I, I'm not going to, I, I won't change it, the verbiage, I want to keep the verbiage the same way. We have a new budget committee, maybe, you know, maybe with new players in there that we can help push this through a little bit better. So my, my motion still says, says the same about, you know, the, the original amendment was just to send it back. My amendment, only amendment, was to send it back and then bring it, bring it back to the full commission no later than the October full commission meeting.
All right, it, and was there a second to your motion? Okay, motion and a second. Commissioner Boy.
If, uh, where I could find the grant, I'd like to find the grant, I've looked through some, some of the packages, the, the six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant that we're matching. Is it in the packet somewhere, is it in one of the committee packets, is it in the finance office? It's, where can I find that?
I think, I think that would be best answered by the county mayor.
All right, um, Mr. Mayor, do you have an answer to that question, please?
My apologies, what was the question?
Ask your question.
The grant, the grant documents?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be happy to get you a copy of the grant.
Okay, so it, it's not, I, I thought I was overlooking it, I, I wasn't sure.
No, uh, finance just informed me that they have a copy of it, and we'd be happy to share that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on this specific thing? Oh, yeah.
I'm in the queue for this one.
Um, Commissioner Teichner is in the queue next, is that in regard to, all right, Commissioner, when? Is this in regard to?
I think it's on the main motion, sir.
Main motion, Commissioner Mansfield?
Yeah, I just want to clarify on the record, um, that I was, what I was stating earlier, I didn't say that the committee didn't exist, I said the Parks and Recreation Board did not exist, to which the committee was mysteriously created for, and that's the whole problem with this, is that you created a, a committee without creating a board, and you even didn't even put the right amount of people on it, which goes to show that it didn't follow any statutory authority or proper resolution procedure to even create that, uh, board. So the board doesn't exist, therefore the grant, in my opinion, is in jeopardy, this thing's a whole legal mess, which is why we kept it in legislative, um, in order for the law director to try to work that out. But I digress, but I just want to clarify on the record, I did not say that, uh, we did not have a committee, I said we didn't have a board for what the committee actually be appointed to, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Schmidt.
And this, I promise, this is not a gotcha question for Commissioner Jones, but I did, you know, I've been talking to constituents about this issue. Question came up, did you attempt to contact the mayor or the director of schools before doing an interview? Well, I mean, oh, I'm sorry, did, my apologies, did Commissioner Jones attempt to contact Mayor Isbell or the director of schools prior to doing an interview with WKR?
From the point of view, this doesn't, this is not, this is not germane to the issue at hand, issue at hand.
It's not.
Okay, well, forgive me, then, uh, the six hundred and twen, the, will this put the grant in jeopardy if we follow Commissioner Becker's motion to put this off till October, are we still going to be okay, I think we are, but I want to just make sure for the record.
I think we will, County Mayor?
All right, I apologize for trying to get up, I, I don't know if I missed anything or not. Uh, but I do want to talk about the timeframe, uh, if we do not move this forward, we will lose the grant. Uh, we're running out of time, uh, July is a hard deadline on having it completed. Uh, that's why we need to get this, uh, money rolled over, it was money that was appropriated last year, and we're asking for it to be rolled over so we can complete the project. Uh, you know, the project's gone through all the phases, uh, the last, at the, the last, uh, item on this was the plat approval, which happened on, uh, March nineteenth of twenty twenty-four, uh, where they combined the house in with the property. Uh, the reason why it was separated, people have talked about it being separated, is because Mr. Brown had a life estate in that property. So since you had a life estate, we had to separate that parcel out because it remained taxable within the parcel. Once that life estate went away when Mr. Brown passed away, then the parcel went back into the property, so it is part of the property. Uh, we look at this will and this codicil, uh, you know, it, it talks about the park, and that's exactly what this plan addresses. Uh, this plan addresses. And that's exactly what this plan addresses. Uh, this plan addresses building a park. We talk about restoring the house, and this is from previous commissions, this isn't under my, under my watch, but this was already approved. They had determined that it was more economical for the schools to renovate that using in-house labor rather than us bidding that out and doing it ourselves. So it made more sense to do that in-house, uh, just like it makes more sense for the schools to maintain the property, uh, rather than us trying to buy the equipment, build the sheds, and maintain the property ourselves. Uh, this was a joint ownership, a joint partnership between the schools and the county, and is operated as such every since. Uh, we are at the final stages of putting all of this together. Roughly four years of work got sidelined by COVID, but roughly four years of work, we are at the point of putting this together and getting this park built that will honor William and Martha Brown. And so, uh, you know, I don't know what else we can add to it other than everything's in place, everything's ready to go. Uh, yes, it builds a world-class, uh, uh, cross-country track. It's got pavilions on it. All of this was disclosed at a gen ops meeting, and everybody looked at it and everybody's seen it. Uh, the copies that you see on the table, again, is pictures that were shown to gen ops. Uh, the plat approval on March 19th was voted on by the planning commission, of which one of our members is the chair. And that removed that parcel. So everything's been in place, everything's been above board. While it didn't happen under my watch, it was all above board and it remains above board. Uh, we are ready to start this project, get this park built, honor the wishes of Mr. and Ms. Brown, and have a memorial park that's fitting for them. And in that, in that plan will be a renovation of the house. It will be renovated, it will be a showpiece, a centerpiece for this park. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone in the queue that wants to speak to this motion to send it back to the committee? All right, Commissioner Becker?
Just, just a, just a quick note, the, the list that I read off a little bit ago from September 21st, 2020, that was the newly formed Sumner County Parks and Recreation Board. It's, I mean, it's, it's black and white, so, uh, it's not a committee. I, if I said committee earlier, I apologize. It, it is the Sumner County Parks and Recreation Board, and it was the seven mem- uh, one, two, three, four, the seven members, I read them correctly. So, but I just wanted to clarify that, that that, the list I read off is the Sumner County Parks and Recreation Board. It's not a committee, it's not whatever, it's the board. So just wanted to clarify that, thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Wynn? Is this on the motion to send it back?
Sure, yeah, we'll talk about that. And jump back in if I have other questions or comments, so, uh, we're talking about just a, a reappraisal of funds. You know, so all of the finger pointing, and we don't have keys, but yet we're accessing the building. We need the combination, but yet we've toured the facility. Uh, and there's, there's so much conflicting information out here as far as, you know, it, it just continues the, the finger pointing as to why we can't do something. And from all that I'm hearing is, is we've really got a disagreement on where to start. You know, so you're, you're way far down the road of starting on a park. But yet, we've got some folks on this body who say, we gotta start with the house, which we have zero plans. We haven't assessed it because we don't have access, but again, we've toured it, I guess some people have toured it. It, it, it just doesn't make sense to me. We, we are literally in jeopardy of losing a state grant. This is money that will be given to us, and, and we're talking pennies on the dollar match. But we're going to come out with like, I guess, a $1.2 million park for like a hundred and something thousand dollar county fund investment or county money. It, it, it really is a no-brainer here, and, and, and we're splitting hairs on where to start, you know? We, we have had such a great track record of starting and completing projects in this body. I mean, I'm surprised that we, we don't already have something already drawn up, you know? Why don't we? If that's what we think we need to start, what has stopped us from go ahead and, and getting some ducks in a row? You know, it, it doesn't sound like access to the building's going to be the problem, you know? Because again, we're already inside of it, we already know what the condition is. It's just, it all befuddles me, you know? Why we continue to sit here and, and hash over the same stuff? And ultimately, it's, it's, the citizens are going to pay the price for it, you know? So can we finish one thing, just one thing that we started? One thing that we started would be great. But it's like, we'll get to like the, the five-yard line, and then suddenly it's like, no, no, we need to go back to the one-inch line because, you know, I, for whatever reason, we don't, we don't need to start there.
We're, we're talking about sending something back, we're not sending it back.
Yeah, we.
Yeah, so I'm.
What we're talking about right now is why we.
Yeah, I'm going to get there, and I, I appreciate the interjections and interruptions, but, uh, you know, we'll, we'll get there. So I, I don't necessarily think that we need to send this back to committee. The, it's just a reappraisal of funds. It's not new funding. We've already got a project that's outlined. We, we hear about all this stuff with the, you know, the, the parks plan and, and, you know, eminent domain, and stealing people's lands and connecting, connecting parks that, that, you know, quite honestly, I've reviewed the, the parks plan, and that's not even in there that I recall, you know? It's like, we start to marry two things together, there's a highway plan, uh, that, that talks about a, a sidewalk that would potentially connect, but that would be on T-DOT to do, not, not the county. It, it's, again, I think just some of this stuff is just getting ridiculous. So I, I, I appreciate Mr. Becker's efforts there. I think we do need to settle this this evening. Either we're gonna start the park or we're not. That's what it comes down to. This goes to budget, we'll delay it for two months, we just burn two months on the back end. Now it's going to cost us more on, on the back end because now we've got to put rush orders in for people to do stuff on a tighter timeline. Uh, and we're just going to get less bang for our buck, so I, I'm, I'm not going to support a delay.
Mr. Chairman, I've been in queue, I've asked to be in queue on this.
Oh, uh, go ahead.
So I, I'm just going to say here, I just find it really interesting that the same people who are saying that, hey, we want to move something forward and finish something, that's a park, that's a nice to have, are the same people who are saying that we need to hold off on making minimal improvements for EMS facilities to help people who need EMS services. So I'm just going to point that out first, and I am written real tired of this. If I was, if I was not a no-quitter kind of person, this is the kind of crap that makes everybody hate government. They should just hate us all. Anyhow, I actually agree with what Mr. Uh, my, my commissioner said over here. I just wish we were consistent about it. I'd like to move this forward too. I have an amendment, I think will fix these things, but I'm going to go ahead and move this forward, I'm going to be against it, and then I'm going to make an amendment. So I would like to immediately move this forward, and then please get back in queue so I can make an amendment, because I think with a little bit of tweaking, we can actually do this, instead of everybody standing up here talking about how our stuff is great and the other side of stuff is terrible and vice versa.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's nothing currently in this park plan that honors the memory of the Browns, nothing. It's not there. We've, we've been promised that it will be there, but all the money is already allocated for all the things that are in this park. So I don't know when that's coming. We know a historic home, anybody that's dealt with historic homes, Mr. Hyde, you've dealt with historic homes, you know what amount of money it could take to, to renovate a home like that. This house has 1970s paneling in it, it's got 1980s cabinetry in it, it's got linoleum floors in it and red carpet. It smells like urine, it looks like hobos live in it. It's, it's got piles of, of just trash everywhere in it. Half the windows are busted out of it. The, the trees, everything around the, the building, um, needs to be cut away. It's, it's got tons of work to do.
Point of order.
This, this is about the amendment, why to send it back, why to send it back to, uh, to the committee. I want to in, interpret differently what the mayor said. The previous commission had a directive with the will, and, and speak to Commissioner Wynn's points too. We have questions as to, everybody wants to do something, but we're going in different directions, and why can't we just do something? It's because the way that it's going about doing, they're disregarding the wishes of a dead man. We've got a starting point right here. It's in black and white. It says, start with the house. We want to start with the house. To do that, we've got to get it back to committee.
Commissioner Jones, try to move this back to why we need to send it.
Because everything in pushing it forward is going to give money to the wrong places of focus, and it's going to be out of compliance with the will. We're going to do every, we're putting the cart before the horse. We're going to burn all of our money in a park, and we're not going to have, what, the one thing Mr. Brown asked for was to get his house fixed and, and promoted as the park, that's the centerpiece of the park, and that's where everything needs to start at. So what the, what the former commission did was they undid the, the last act of a dying man, which was to amend his will to take the 500,000 out of the trust. They turn around and put it right back in.
Mr. Chairman, we, I understand this.
We've got to correct it.
Yeah, we've, we've got to bring this back to the, we're, we're way off track.
It's got to come back to committee, we've got to correct it.
Let's move on. Commissioner Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Correct a couple of statements that have been made. Um, there's no budget in this, there's no cost, there's no estimates. Um, this, that was voted on, $100,000, February 2020, has a budget in it. The budget does not include anything for the house. It's in violation of the will on COTUSL, pretty simple. Um, the budget is all for whatever this park is, doesn't include a, um, cross-country track, which was, again, used weaponized, uh, recently, uh, for the children, um, because we hate kids, right? And, uh, wasn't in here. So you also have, I, I question the legality of even receiving these funds, because on September the 21st, 2020, it says, Commissioner Goode announced the following recommendations to serve on the newly formed Sumner County Parks and Recreation Board. Problem is, there was no Parks and Recreation Board created. You put members on something that was never created by resolution. The Parks Board doesn't exist. So our question is, if we go to TDEC and say, hey, we did this wrong, um, is this even legal? They might just say, we don't care, you're fine. That's okay. I would like a legal opinion on that. But the problem is, is that the, there is no money. I wrote, where is the money for the house? It does not exist in this plan. It's not here for this master parks plan. Also want to, uh, correct another wrong statement that was said, page 47. Item number four, the purpose of this plan is to construct Upper Station Camp Greenway from SR 174 Long Hall Pike to SR 25 in Cotton Town. That's the bridal house. That's straight through Commissioner Holmes' back freaking yard. That's why she's sitting in that seat, because the previous commission voted to take her property from her and put a, a greenway to nowhere.
We need to go back.
So my point is, is that it's important to send this back because we're not, the money for the, the will is not even in this plan. It's not in this plan for that house to be fixed and renovated. So if you want to keep doing things the wrong way, fine, but I'm not going to support that.
Uh, Commissioner Wright?
Folks, it's 20 minutes after midnight. None of us have turned into a pumpkin yet. But what have we accomplished tonight? This was added to the agenda. I agree with my fellow commissioner. Send it back, put it on a regular agenda to where the citizens of every one of our districts have an opportunity to get up here and speak if they wish. The, none of these citizens that were here tonight knew anything about this. And I understand we're on a timeframe, I get it. But we've got to make sure that it is right, and the people need to speak their voice, or have, at least have an opportunity to speak their voice. Thank you.
Commissioner Klein?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make.
This quick, it needs to go back to committee. It is written with illegal MOUs. It just was not done properly, and I think Commissioner Mansfield is right. This, this grant may be in jeopardy because the board, that was not created correctly. It needs to go back to one of the committees. It doesn't have to be gen ops. It could be budget, it could be legislative, but it needs to go back. We need to get together at a table. We need to figure out legally what's wrong, and then we need to fix it, and then move the park forward.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, just one cor- one correction. Uh, I think my fellow Commissioner Mansfield was headed in the right direction as I, I was, but there is a budget on the park. It's on this page right here. All the expenses are laid out right here, and you can clearly see there's nothing about the house anywhere in this, and it spends the full $1.25 million on everything but the house. So there's, there's where, if we push this forward, there's where all your money's going, the wrong direction. It's black, black and blue and white, right there. So another reason why. And then just a quick address, um, when the, um, when they saw how negative all the, um, citizens' comments were on the director of schools video that he put out about this misinformation, Channel 2 reached out to me unsolicited. They saw that the citizens were angry, so just to address that.
I'm not sure. County Mayor, and now, listen, uh, folks, everyone's out of the queue. Do not. Well, there we go, two people, Commissioner Rogers and Lambert, uh, please, no one after them go into the queue. This is, we've pretty much said everything. I'm ready to vote up or down, or, or something. So let's, let's move on with this as soon as we can. Commissioner, I, I mean, the county mayor, I'm sorry.
I'll step down.
Okay, good. Uh, Commissioner Rogers? Okay, all right, we're ready to vote on whether to send this back or not.
One more is not to keep, Mr. Chairman, I couldn't pin it off.
Do you vote?
It's the, it's the amendment that I made.
Yes.
Add it to a comeback, you know, later.
Yes. All right.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Well, we've got to vote, vote on the, uh, main motion.
Now we're voting to whether to spend, send it back, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, put that on the floor.
Which committee we're sending it to?
Budget committee.
I think it should go to budget, probably. Yes, sending it back to budget.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Okay. Motion?
I can't, it's over now. It's over now. I could have solved it.
They're just going to override the decisions that we talked about tonight. These legal issues need to go to legislative. Can it not go to both?
Mr. Chairman, point of information, a legislative, the legislative committee can put on an agenda whatever they want to, independent of the budget.
Yeah, I, I, I think we'll stick with budget. You, you can change your vote if you want to, but. All right, one more motion.